Good evening. It is Tuesday, March 28th. It is 6:30 PM. We have a full dais. I'm calling this meeting to order. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. That's really important because I'm going to be jumping around tonight and that's giving Colin a heads up. So, the first thing we're going to do this evening, we are so lucky to have two young ladies from the Los Pines Elementary Girl Scout Troop 151. We have Sarah Dominguez. Sarah, if you'll come up here and stand by the podium and turn around and face the audience. They want to see your beautiful smiling face. There she is. This is Sarah Dominguez and her, I don't want to leave her alone, her friend Sienna Gutierrez. Sienna, if you want to come stand by Sarah. Both of these young ladies are in Girl Scout Troop 151. Sarah is in 4th grade and her favorite subject is science. And Sienna's in 3rd grade and she likes all the subjects, but her favorite subject is social studies. What warmed my heart was when I visited with Sarah and Sienna both, they said that they like being in the Girl Scout troop because they help their community around the school and they show people how to be responsible and that they both participated in a puppet show to teach their peers about the importance of honesty. So we may be getting that puppet show here at the city for a reminder for all of us, but we think they are the hope of the future and we are thrilled that they are with us this evening. And ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please rise, these young ladies are going to lead us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let's give these ladies a round of applause. Okay, Colin's going to take their picture and parents, if you want to come take a picture, you are welcome to do that as well. All right, look at, look at them. All right, let's give them another round of applause. That's a scary thing to do in front of a lot of people and they did a great job. If you will please remain standing, our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Bernie Jackson with Trinity Zion Ministries. Pastor Jackson?
Could you join me? Come down. Would you join me, please, ladies?
You guys.
It's okay.
Almighty and everlasting God, we come before you tonight, God, thanking you for these precious treasures that you have given us, God. Help us, Father, in the name of Jesus, to protect them, to provide for them, Lord God, to watch over them, God, as we are the example, the role model that you've given them through us. Help us, Lord God, to be on our jobs. Father, tonight I ask that you would bless all of those who are grieving loss of loved ones, God. Touch them, Father, and let them know that you have received your children into your eternal care. And now tonight, God, I just ask in the name of Jesus that in this body, God, that you would bring us to a point of humility, Lord God, and integrity and wisdom, Lord God, that we would be working to serve one another. Bless this council, Lord God, and let them remember that you are in control. Help them to seek their guidance from you, Lord God. We ask for a hedge of protection around all city employees, Lord God, the police, the Friday department, the first responders, those that are sitting in offices doing their jobs, Lord God. Bless them, Lord God, for their servant attitude. Help us, Lord God, as the city needs the leadership that's going to come from one high. And then, God, those of us that are being served, let us learn how to volunteer, Lord God, and be a part of this, one body, God, working together for what is good for this city. Bless them, God, all of these that are serving. Keep them, Lord God, and bless their families. We thank you for Jesus, in his name, God, we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys, for joining me. Thank you. Okay? Thank you.
You may be seated. Thank you, Pastor Jackson. And thank you, you guys, your parents are ready to go. You can get up, go with them. It's a school night and I told them I was going on record, I'm not kicking them out of a public meeting, but it's a school night and they've got things to do. So they were wanting to head on home. All right, we have a long agenda. I'm going to try to go fairly quick through the mayor's report. Colin, let's jump right in. We're going to kind of start in the upper left-hand corner and work our way back. I was very pleased the first, March 1st, 2nd, and I guess 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers and Councilmember Lee and myself went to the mid-year TML conference and Councilmember Lee and I both received our Certified Municipal Officer accreditation and so that's a picture and thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers was our photographer on that and we appreciate her doing that. Colin, if we go to, just to the right of that, thank you to Butler Construction for hosting the Alive After Five and just below that is the First Franklin. They are a bank here in town. They make some really great personal loans and the numbers are, I was like, okay, I give, what's the meaning of the numbers? It's their branch number. So it meant something if you're in First Federal, it's their branch number and the ladies there were very excited about being able to provide this service to Bastrop. To the left of that, we see our famous and award-winning Bastrop Opera House. There were several awards given for their plays and just a fun, fun time to be there and we are so proud of everything that they have done. Below that, you'll see two events that I went to. The Smithville Workforce Training Center sponsored an event and it was really an important one because this one was with the employers to try to identify what skills they were looking for so that when they provide training, they're producing people with certifications that the employers in town need. So it was very well done and interesting and I enjoyed doing that. Next to that is the flyer from the mayor's prayer luncheon. I'm always so very thankful to the Bastrop Christian Ministerial Alliance for putting that luncheon together every year. Next to that is a picture of me with the Executive Director of Visit Bastrop and our Main Street Manager. Our Executive Director of Visit Bastrop is Susan Smith and our Main Street Manager is Candace and we were all there for the Sportsman's Banquet, had a good time. Let's jump up in the middle there, Colin. There is a picture of me with Lindsay at Cana Wine. They had their ribbon cutting. They are located on Chestnut and that was a packed room. It was, we wished them nothing but success and happy to have them. And just below that, everyone knows the dancing Carrie Fossler. And that was the first Friday, our Bolly-Ex class did a flash mob and I was like, I'm not doing this, I'm not doing this. And the music started and right after I took this picture, I joined in as well because I too do Bolly-Ex on Saturday. So that was a lot of fun. Below that, many of you may have noticed that we have two new murals on Main Street. The one on the right is at Main Street and Chestnut and the one on the left is at Main Street and Spring. And I hope you enjoy those. They're really a fun thing to see. And then in the upper right-hand corner, this is the Youth Advisory Council that helped with the kickoff for the Park Master Plan. Raise your hand if you've done the Park Master Plan survey. The rest of you, Teri Moore is hunting you down and she desperately wants you to finish that survey. We'll be working on that for two more weeks. And both of those pictures were at the kickoff. It was really a lot of fun. Just below that is Dr. Shapiro from MD Anderson. They do a worldwide conference and they always have one night that they spend in Bastrop and I think I have made that conference with them every year that they've done it. And then, of course, one of my favorites, there I am with Tricia for the empty bowl because there is nothing like picking up a piece of artwork, somebody else doing the cooking, having great soups. You don't have to cook it and you don't have to clean it up. And as far as I'm concerned, that's the perfect meal. So I always enjoy that one. Colin, if we go to the next slide, it's the things that I promised I would do between when I turned in the report and tonight, and I did. And I want to call out that the Recreation Center was sponsoring walks and I led a walk to Delgado Park and one of the best things about it, I took about eight people with me and none of them had ever been to Delgado Park. And that was kind of the purpose of choosing to go to that park. So we had a really good time. On the next page, you will see all the things that I promised to do between now and our next council meeting, which will be on April 11th. And I will draw your attention, we'll talk about the Best Warrior competition a little bit later. National Walking Day is April 5th. Hope that there's going to be events throughout the day and I hope everybody participates in that. And on April 6th, I believe Cheryl Lee will be doing her debut at the Farm Street Opry, hosting the Farm Street Opry. And we're excited to see her and I know that she will have a good time. A reminder that city offices are closed on Good Friday. With that, we're moving on to item 4B and I'm going to start with Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. So it's been a while since we sat up here, so I have quite a few things to cover. I did attend the TML Mid Conference with the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. Just the girls, weekend, we had a really good time. And I was very honored to receive my little pin that I wore tonight, so y'all could see it, for becoming a Certified Municipal Official, having finished 72 hours of government training outside of what we do up here. And I am very appreciative of the mayor for introducing me to those courses. I kind of listen to them while I'm at work and I just think that having that education, there's so much going on outside of Bastrop at a state level that affects Bastrop. And if you don't have that knowledge and understanding, it's kind of hard to make decisions, the right decisions for Bastrop. So I enjoyed the courses and I hope that I can take that knowledge with me and I have a new goal next year to win the most hours. I don't know how that's going to work out, but we'll see. I attended the Parks Pop-Up Event to kick off the survey. I too want to make sure, we have a good showing. I think we might have over 500 now, but we, our goal is 1,000 and there's still a few days left. So if you haven't done the survey and want to provide input, please do so. I got a little break in my schedule and went to go bow with veterans. Couple of Fridays ago, there was a Veterans Night, Bowling Night at Film Alley and I'm not a veteran, but I like to bowl. I bowled in a league or two and I have my own ball and I held my own with the veterans and met a lot of people living both here in the city and the council or in the county. And I just had a good time. Went by myself and met a bunch of people and walked out with some friends. So if you are interested in that, they're hosting them every month and one thing that I was told was that they need sponsors. So I think it's like $400, $400 for them to be at the, to have the veterans bowling at the Film Alley and they need sponsors. So if that's something you're interested in, reach out to Bastrop County Cares. I went to The Addams Family Production, which was an excellent show, Broadway quality, enjoyed it through and through. I love what the Opera House is doing. They have some upcoming shows for Little Women and Music Man, which I am going to be in. My acting career revived itself, so I will be in Music Man and those are two shows that are coming up. I went to my board meetings, the Library Board, DEI, MP, and Z. I will actually be hosting a walk from Delgado Park on the 5th, so if you are going to participate that day, feel free to come to Delgado Park at 5:30 and we'll walk around Pecan Park, not Pecan Park, Piney Creek and over to Jewel Hodges Park. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Plunkett?
Well, I just wanted to congratulate again Connaught Wine, next door to Piney Creek. So they're a good neighbor and very happy to see them have such a great event that the mayor talked about. Opera House is killing it again with, you know, all the awards that they won and I'm, they've got to win some awards for Addams Family. That was amazing. We saw that this weekend. And the, all the restaurants downtown are working hard on Table on Main, which will be coming up here pretty soon and they will run out of tickets, they always do. It's a great event. Encourage everybody to come out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Sorry, Mayor, I don't have anything to report after all that great news these two had.
All right. Councilmember Crouch?
Let's see, I got to attend several board meetings. So the Main Street Board Meeting and the Construction Standards Board Meeting and I think that's the first time they'd met in a year and a half or something. So they haven't met in a while and we really got a lot of work for them. So I think they're happy now that they're, they're all meeting and getting into the rhythm of holding a meeting again. I think they forgot, forgot to do that. And then attended a development, the Customer Advisory Group to get information for George and his report. So that group had met several times and got a lot of information for George and his report. And then the Parks Board, the joint meeting that we all had, which was really good. And I really encourage everybody to fill out the survey. I know that we've got about 500, I think Cheryl said, so the goal was 1,000. If we can just double that up in two weeks, we'll be in really good shape. And then the prayer lunch, again, it was, I think last year, that was my favorite event of all the events, was the prayer lunch and I think this year was the same, same thing. It's really, a lot of positive energy leaves that, leaves that room when that lunch is, when it's over. So it's really, really good and positive message that came out of that. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. It was very much a very uplifting day. Appreciate you being there. Councilmember Kirkland?
So I have 15 things on my list here and most of them have been mentioned already, so I'm just going to skip almost all of it. I've been wandering through the parks, handing out the Parks Master Pen cards, so if you see me, you know, chasing you down with the card in hand, that's what it's about. And I also attended the Boring Company SpaceX TCEQ hearing and my claim to fame there is that I ended up with a picture in the Wall Street Journal of my backside.
Not commenting on your backside, Councilmember Kirkland. Was that your last item?
That's it, thank you.
Yes, the TCEQ meeting, unfortunately, I ended up with my front side in several different things on, as a matter of that. All right, we are on the top of page two, City Manager's Report. Ms. Creo?
I will hopefully breeze through this quickly. I want to remind everybody about Easter in the Park. That is on Saturday, April 1st. We are going to do a movie as well in that Zootopia. So for those of you who haven't watched it, please bring your kids. It is a hilarious movie to begin with and it's co-hosted by the Bastrop Police Department. And I know the Police Department has a special thing going on with the golden egg, so I'll let Vicki talk about that if she needs to. Next is the Iroodell District. This has been a topic of conversation. If you recall, a few meetings ago, as we talked about the fence, it may have just been last meeting, but my days are all running together these days. There was an item in there that talked about the pattern book in the Iroodell District and I cautioned us to slow down and let's take a look because the attorneys were looking at the validity of the Iroodell District. For the short term, we are suspending enforcement of the Iroodell District until we get to council action and that is a certificate of appropriateness essentially that governs materials, building materials within certain segments of the town. We are prepared to bring that April 11th. What that means is a series of domino events within the code and we will begin to put some things together for planning commission that ends up matching where there will now be holes where the Iroodell District was referenced. So plan to see us quite a bit. The DEI Board with, in conjunction with Councilmember Lee, received some money from the St. David's Foundation and we are working in conjunction with the Park Board and the Arts and Cultural Commission, the Cultural Arts Commission, I'm sorry. My prior city, it was Arts and Culture and here it's Cultural Arts. 600 for Delgado Park and 600 for Kerr Community Park. So still working through the details of what those images would be, still working through the execution of that plan. There may be some city match dollars required, don't know what that is yet and as we flush it out, it'll come back to you for final approval. Vibe Tribe, so we had the resident show up, the business owner show up at the last council meeting. So we are still working through the issuance of the sign as of, I received her information as of last week. So we have a couple of alternatives for her that we're going to be working through. One of them is fairly easy, change the address and change the sign type. And then the other is, if that's not appropriate for her, take her through the variance process. Again, Parks and Rec and Open Space Master Plan, please, please, please go do that. You will make us very happy. What this will inform is how the community builds its green spaces and ultimately, if there's any money that's borrowed to build things, that will ultimately affect your tax rate. So please, please, please participate. And I had my monthly sit with Sylvia at the Senior Center. By the way, the Senior Center hosts poker, so if you don't know that, they are very serious about their poker and their poquino, just FYI, very serious. And we interrupted, don't interrupt because you'll get heckled. Staff will tell you that. Topics included the development process, obviously concerns for smaller homeowners, how they get through the process, which is a common theme we keep hearing. Economic development, specifically how we're assisting smaller businesses. And the $10,000 micro loan program, which you'll hear when I put on my EDC director hat, has not been launched and some businesses are finding that may or may not be sufficient. So how we marry that into additional incentives. Transportation, big issue. People want to know how we're going to stop the traffic from barreling down 150 and how we stop the traffic from barreling down and ripping up the streets and other sections of town. Super important. Main Street, also an area of concern. The fact that we just painted the murals and they're kind of already fading, we've got to figure out how we fix that and make sure that the product type we're using has some sustainability. So it is beautiful and doesn't look like a rundown crosswalk. And then we had folks concerned with homeless and growth in the area. Obviously, with growth comes the growing pains and how we're going to address that and how we leverage our partnerships to do that. Next one is April 17th at 7:15 in the morning. I am an early bird, I'm sorry. I am trying to do morning and evening at alternate sites to give the residents an opportunity to attend either one. And so if you don't know what that is, I'm, no question is off limits. So I don't have a script. We just talk through whatever is of interest to the residents and we try not to do it at City Hall because this can be a scary place. This Friday is the mayor's State of the City, so if you don't have tickets for that, you might be too late. We're going to have a good time. It'll be six years of her service and then also a recap with this final year. There has been a lot of work done over the past six years and we're ending with a roast, which is a minor comedy show and you will sorely miss out if you don't attend. I've seen the script. Lots of upcoming agenda items of importance is that flood damage prevention ordinance. The community does not participate in the community rating system and so as a community, because drainage is an important issue, we may need to be looking into that and see what the impact is to our residents. There's some savings in that we can receive discounts off flood insurance, but there's also some cons and so we've got to work through that, but we will be doing that pretty quick. And then we are entering into the budget season. We are going to launch what I call budgeting for the residents. It's called Balancing Act. The residents will get to move the slider. This is all in advance of the council seeing it. So it will inform the budget process, what the residents actually want to see in the budget, they can move up or move down and how it impacts the tax rate. So again, trying to be transparent about how we're spending money. The other item that's super critical is we got away from the quarterly report, we've put a dashboard together, we have a draft launch of that also, that lists our checkbook register. Trying to be transparent about every dollar that we spend and the accountability that the residents expect. So we're getting there. We're inching our way there. And that's all I have as the city manager. We'll talk about the other role here in a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Creo. So do you have any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Lee?
Well, I don't know if it's for the city manager or the city attorney or even for you, but I have already started my TML training for this year, several hours in, and a lot of it is focused on the legislative session. Can we get updates on bills that are being, that are on the floor, being discussed that will directly impact and like kind of, I think it's good for the public to know, this is what's being discussed, this is what's on the floor, this is the stage of that and how it can impact. So I mean, not all of them, of course, but ones that I think the community needs to be more aware of.
Absolutely. I can work with the city manager on that. We've got, we'll start with the executive summary from TML and we'll pull out the ones that are more specific. Thankfully, Representative Gertis and Senator Schwarner, we have very specifically a bill that we are advancing for us and so I'll make sure that everybody's aware of the stage of those bills as well. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers, I think you had, did you have a question as well?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, and if I, my memory is not as clear as I remember, when we first talked about the crosswalks, we talked about the paint and whether it was, whether we researched that before we painted it, so what happened?
So we did research the paint. I think the paint did not have appropriate time to cure because when you go look at the crosswalk right now, you can actually see the tire treads and the tire marks. So I think it has an issue to do with curing time and then also a combination of sealing. There's no sealing that happened. There was some prep work, but again, there is, there's a special type of process for crosswalks and things that you want to be vibrant and last a little bit longer and it kind of looks like the vinyl. There's a heat application to it. It's a lot more expensive than the paint that is donated to us. So we've got to go through and really take a look at, did we receive donated material, for example, that's going to cost us a lot more on the maintenance side of it? There is a warranty right now with the crosswalk, so we're going to, you know, try to get that addressed. And then also, I've already tasked Curtis with looking at a product that can seal it and help make it last a little longer.
Okay, I just, Chris, because I remember us questioning that when we first talked about, you know, getting the right product. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, anybody else have a question for the city manager? All right, we're going to move forward with, we've got three proclamations and I'm going We are honored tonight to have Command Sergeant Major Thompson with us. If you'll step forward and thank you Commissioner Hamner for bringing her. We all know that Commissioner Hamner is very supportive of the veterans and Command Sergeant Major Thompson takes care of the Best Warrior Competition and we are thrilled that they are allowing Bastrop to host that. So I have a real quick proclamation to read for her. Whereas the Best Warrior Competition is an annual statewide and international event that will take place the 27th of March, and yes, they started yesterday, through April 1st, 2023, at Camp Swift Training Center in Bastrop, Texas. This friendly contest, I've been there, it's not that friendly, they're pretty competitive, puts the best soldiers, airmen from all National Guard units within the state of Texas along with soldiers from the country of the Republic of Chile, Czech Republic, against each other to win the best non-commissioned officer, best junior enlisted for both Army and Air National Guard. Whereas the US winners of these four categories go to the regional competition and hopefully on to represent the state of Texas at the national competition. To honor the winners, their families, employers, and supporters, the Texas Army National Guard Senior Enlisted Advisor, Command Sergeant Major Michelle L. Thompson, will hold a banquet on April 1st, 2023. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby welcome the Best Warrior Competition to the City of Bastrop and appreciate the presence of Texas National Guard in our city and encourage our citizens to support this event by welcoming these guard members into their businesses and our grateful community. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to say anything?
If I could.
Absolutely.
Not to hijack this whole meeting, so I don't like to repeat things, but this is something that I'm proud to repeat that I get to be here, first of all, and second of all, mayor and council members, that Bastrop has absolutely supported the Best Warrior event that we have had for more than 12 years. And we don't repeat things that don't work. And the reason why it works is that the county and the city, they embrace all of our soldiers and all of our airmen and we couldn't do what we do for this competition, which builds up our young.
And we couldn't do what we do for this competition, which builds up our young, because believe me, at my age, I don't want to be a competitor. But it builds up the confidence, not only in themselves, but community support for our soldiers and our airmen. They are still deploying, they are still giving it their all, but they need that reminder every once in a while that they have a community behind them. And Bastrop has always, always done that. It is a friendly, but absolutely an inclusive competition. And on behalf of myself and the Texas Adjutant General, we thank you. And we are here also to give back to this community. This week, it's, the last couple of days has been eating a lot. So that's a plus because you have some great eating venues here. But when things get hard and there's a fire, there's a flood or something like that, we will be here for you as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much. It's really a fun competition. I think I've made the last several, I know. I appreciate the invitation. All right, counsel, we're moving on to item 4E and I'll ask Pastor Jackson to come forward. There is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing April as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. You are supposed to wear teal. She is in teal. So that in April, find the teal in your closet and that will be a great thing. I wanted to point out just a couple of quick things. Whereas sexual assault in the city of Bastrop, Bastrop County in the state of Texas is intolerable and must be stopped, Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. In 2023, it marks the 22nd anniversary of Sexual Assault Awareness Month and the theme of this year's campaign is drawing connection. Prevention demands equity. We can build online communities free from sexual harassment, abuse and assault by practicing digital consent, intervening when we see harmful behaviors and promoting online communities that value inclusion, safety and respect. Programs designed to educate and provide information to individuals about ways to help prevent sexual assault are encouraged throughout the community while also providing survivors with safety, help and justice through services and resources. Now therefore, the City of Bastrop joins the Family Crisis Center, victim advocates and other support service programs in the belief that all City of Bastrop residents must be part of the solution to end sexual assault. I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim April as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Let's give Pastor Jackson a round of applause.
I just have a few things I want to say. We have a lot of information around town. We've been working with the City of Bastrop very diligently. And so there's a, there's a lot of activities going on in April that we are partnering with the city. But we want to especially invite you to go and see our display, the exhibit at the museum. It's in the front room and it gives the history of the Family Crisis Center. And it also talks about the history and the progress that we are making to help eliminate sexual assault to our victims. So what we're asking you guys to do this, this month is during the month of April, please join the Family Crisis Center as we raise awareness. That's what people will ask you for teal or if they ask you about this little ribbon that you'll see, that's Sexual Assault Awareness. And we don't hog the whole month because we know it's also Child Abuse Awareness Month. So we work with our partners on that. But we're asking you to help us raise awareness, to lift up our survivors and to give them a voice so that they're not silenced when these things happen to them. We also want to take, I've come up here year after year and given you a lot of statistics and I'm not going to do that this year. I just want to say that this will be the last proclamation that we will receive under the mayor's watch and our executive director, Kathy Henson, our board, our staff and our volunteers, wanting to thank you for your leadership and for your support of the mission of the Family Crisis Center. So they told me to give you a hand. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, counsel.
Talking about our city manager wears many hats, Pastor Jackson wears many hats as well and does a great job at the Family Crisis Center. All right, we're moving to our last proclamation tonight, which is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I know we've got some folks from the Children's Advocacy Center and I don't, I don't think, I didn't see any CASA folks. Oh, there you are, there you are. Okay. All right. And in April, you wear blue. So really, any shade of blue is, is good for, for April. So I'll read just a little bit of the proclamation and give you guys an opportunity to speak as well. Whereas every child is a precious and unique gift who deserves the security of a loving and nurturing home. And I mean, who's not going to agree with that? And the sad fact is that's not the case for every one of the children in Bastrop County. And that's why unfortunately, we need organizations like the Children's Advocacy Center and our CASA group. So I think that's a very, very powerful sentence. Children are vital to our community's future success, prosperity and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets. Child abuse is considered to be one of the most serious public health problems with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse and neglect of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological and behavioral disorders. Child abuse and neglect are a community responsibility affecting both current and future quality of life of a community. Effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created amongst citizens, human service agencies, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies and the business community. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Let's give these dedicated servants a round of applause.
Thank you so much, City of Bastrop. We are so fortunate to be taken care of by this community. It's a loving community. It's an engaged community and we are very grateful. We're having a party at the end of next month. It's called Spring Fest. It's in Fisherman's Park, Saturday, April 29th, 11:30 AM until 4:00 PM. It's a family-friendly festival in the park. It's free of charge. We'd like everyone to come out. It's our way of connecting with our community and letting the kids in our community get to know their trusted adults. Law enforcement, education, medical care, just come out. It's going to be a good time. We hope to see you all there. And we have a T-shirt for you, Madam Mayor, to wear. We hope to see you there. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It's a school night for the soldiers as well. So you are welcome to leave. Thank you so much. I'm trying to see if there's some things I need to skip. I'm trying to get some folks out of here. We're going to do a couple of easy things and that is, we're going to go to item 9C and that is consider action to approve resolution number R 2023-47 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a professional engineering service contract with Fries and Nichols for the wastewater master plan for a not to exceed amount of $165,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. DeCarvello, would you give me my page that I left on the?
Sure.
Yes, thank you. All my secret notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. In front of you tonight for your consideration and authorization is a professional services contract with Fries and Nichols for the wastewater master plan. First, I would like to give a little bit background on the wastewater studies that the city have done. So in May of 2016, the city has hired a consultant to do a wastewater study that included the city's wastewater CCN on the west of the Colorado River. That study did not include the full wastewater CCN. Currently, the city does not have a wastewater master plan and this master plan is a component of the comprehensive plan. So this wastewater master plan will provide the city with a capital improvement plan for the wastewater system and will identify capacity constraints and also provide the city with a projected growth for the wastewater CCN on the short, medium and long term. The project scope includes a kickoff meeting, develop a wastewater flow projections that will also assist with the next phases on the wastewater treatment plant, build a validated hydraulic model of existing wastewater system, conduct existing and future system analysis and develop system improvements. And as I mentioned, develop a wastewater capital improvement plan that will provide an opinion of a probable cost on the, each of the projects and also prioritize the projects. At the end, the engineer will provide us with a wastewater master plan report that we'll be reviewing and will also include a presentation to city council at the end. Now I'm going to talk a little bit of the consultant selection. We advertised for a request for qualification for professional services for this project in November of 2022. We received three statements of qualifications and after the review of the qualifications, we selected Fries and Nichols as the most qualified for the wastewater master plan. And we have a representative with us here tonight from Fries and Nichols, Jessica Vasar. So this contract is for $165,000 and the funding will come from the Water and Wastewater CIP fund. We anticipate providing the notice to proceed next month. The draft capital improvement plan is estimated to be provided to the city for review 12 months from the notice to proceed. They will also provide a draft report right after that, 14 months from the notice to proceed. And a final report will be delivered three weeks after the city provides our comments. With that, we ask you that you authorize this contract with Fries and Nichols.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeCarvello. Okay, any questions, counsel? Councilmember Kirkland?
Yeah, two questions. So the first one is, why can we not do this internally? And then the second question is, what happens if we said no?
I don't think we have the capacity and the staff to do this, especially now with the amount of projects that we have. There's no way we can do this internally. Also, the engineer has additional resources that they could do this project. For example, we don't have any hydraulic model in the house. They'll be building that for us. And the second question, I'm sorry, if we say no?
What if we said no? What would happen?
Let me help with this one. If we, if we say no and we don't have a working master plan, it could put us in a position to where we're not bringing on capacity at the right time. So we may have to turn development away if we don't have wastewater capacity. Or it could cause us to bring on too much capacity too soon, which would also impact the rate. So it's to try to have a strategic plan and that's why it's going over the three timeframes. But it's, it's a constant balance between bringing the capacity on at the right time because the goal is to always keep the wastewater rate. We all know that our CCN does not match up with our city limits. So the only people that are impacted by this are people who pay a water and wastewater bill to the City of Bastrop because it's its own fund and we're trying to make sure that we keep that rate down. And this is a way to make sure that we do that. City manager, do you want to add to that? It's always good when the city manager says yes.
Excellent.
Does that answer your question?
I think that it does. I guess my follow-on question is, there's also, is it 8, 8C, spending $400,000 on engineering services? And I guess my overall kind of meta question is, is, you know, $565,000 total on engineering services. I'm just wondering if we should be building out an engineering department to be able to do some of these things internally?
That is a very good question. I don't think you're ever going to get away completely from outside engineers simply because of the specialty that they bring. But that is definitely something we can consider in the future. The first part that we're doing is bringing on a development engineer. That's posted. Some of the engineering that's happening on the other side in our capital is, is of such specialized expertise, it would be hard for us just to hire that one person for that small job and then move it. So you're more hiring a generalist when you're hiring an engineer on top of everything that comes with engineering, which is the GIS department, the survey department that, you know, and I could, that accordion opens.
And they all need a place to sit and they all have health insurance and?
Agreed. The, the other contract is basically nine-person months for $400,000.
Why don't we talk about, we can pull 8C off the consent agenda, but let's try to stay focused on 9C for right now.
I actually wanted to discuss them in a somewhat combined fashion because they are all different types of engineering services. And I've done that, so thank you. But, and I'm not, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. And if we don't have the experience or the specialized knowledge in-house, then it is appropriate to go out and get that. I'm just wondering if it's something that we could plan for in future years to be able to build a stronger engineering department.
Some of the modeling's pretty sophisticated with very specific skills.
Yes. What I will tell you, we can do better, is our strategic plan. We're building out a wastewater treatment plant right now and we're behind the curve on the wastewater master plan. We have some master plan and we have some components of that. That is where our struggle is because we're going to constantly be behind the eight ball. That's the piece that's at the nucleus of why we have 400 here, 165 here. It is a management and strategy issue.
Do you want to say anything, Jessica?
No.
Okay.
Just here, just in case.
Any, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Kirkland. Is there any further discussion?
I had one.
Councilmember Crouch?
One question.
Mm-hmm.
Just on the, I know you're doing projections for five, 10 and 25 years, I think. And just watching the BEDC meeting last night, it was brought up that at, at the time, we were doing some projections and we didn't take in consideration the boring company and some of the stuff that's coming at us now. And just, I just want to state the obvious that be sure we're picking up the, everything that's coming at us from, from Austin. So I, I know it's obvious, but I just want to make sure that we're picking that up in our, in our projections or your projections.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. One of the things that BEDC did when they did their study was it was more on the Corix CCN. So there, you know, there's different CCNs between Corix and the city, but you're exactly right. There's, there's a lot of moving parts, but we need to take them all into account. All right, counsel, are there any further questions or discussions? I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Rogers and a second from Councilmember Kirkland. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We're going to go to 9D while we've got Ms. DeCarvello up here. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2023-45 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a construction contract with Texas Materials Group, Inc., doing business as Gulf Coast CRH Company, old Austin Highway pavement rehabilitation, not to exceed the amount of $1,490,107, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. So some of you may be familiar with this project, but some of you may not. I'll just give you a little bit of background. So this project is part of this rehabilitation program that has the intent to reinvest and maintain and enhance the street's level of services. So back in 2018, the city entered with a contract with Arch and Western for professional services for the design and developing the construction contract documents for this project. Was the construction contract, construction contract documents were finished, we advertised for bid in May 2019 and we opened bids in June 2019, received two bids and, but these bids exceeded the engineer's estimate. At that time, city council voted not to award the construction contract for this project. Last year, on April 2022, we came to city council to ask for your authorization on a professional services contract for worker partners to revise the construction documents. At that time, they were already a little old and we had to make sure that we revised them based on revisions from text specifi, specifications. So Arch and Western did that, finalized the contract documents. So Archer Western did that, finalized the contract documents in February. And the scope of work includes full depth reclamation with hot mix overlay. Construction will mostly happen at night to reduce traffic disruptions. And rehabilitation will improve structural integrity and of the roadway and surface condition and rideability. So this is just a figure showing the limits of work on this project. We include the whole Austin Highway. Just a little bit on the contractor selection, we advertised for invitation to submit bid proposals on February 23 and also on March 3 of this year. We opened the bid proposals on March 9. And we, after a careful review of the bid proposals and checking the references, the ranking, the first, the selected contractor was Texas Materials Group, Gulf Coast, for the amount of $1,490,107, which is about $250,000 below the engineer's estimate. And we have a representative here with us tonight, Kyle Lewis with Gulf Coast. The funding will come from the certificate series of, certificate of obligation series 2022. The notice to proceed, we submitted next month. The construction is estimated to start in May of 2023 and be completed in approximately two months. And we understand city council's concern and we will start construction right after the school ends. We'll coordinate with the schools and the business in the vicinity of the project and that will be done before and during construction. And with that, we ask you that you authorize the construction contract with Gulf Coast.
And that big grin in the back is the engineer who was right on with his construction opinion of probable cost. Council, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Councilmember Lee?
So you remember this and thank you guys for doing such a good job with the packets because when I review them, I look at the agendas first and then first thing was, I thought we already did this. And then I read the packet and it was explained very well. So thank you. I do have some kind of refresher questions. One, you may not know, and if you don't, that's fine. I was just wondering, we know that that is being focused on because of the amount of traffic that goes, that's on Loop 150. Do we have a traffic count or do we know what the current traffic count is?
I think there is a traffic count. I don't know on top and I had to give that information to you, but I can provide it to you later.
Okay, that would be great. And then, and just looking at the language, there was a statement that said there would be a resident project representative at night. Is that someone from the city or someone from Walker?
With the engineer, Walker Partners, they will be providing a full-time construction inspector duration of the project at night.
Okay. And then I know that most of the work is going to be done at night, but it said major items of construction will be done at night. So will any work be done during the day?
I'll refer to the engineer, but I think the striping will be done during the day.
That would cause traffic to stop or...
Striping may be done during the day. There's a small amount of concrete work that's going to be done at the West End. That will probably be done during the day. It's hard to get concrete delivered at 2:00 in the morning. So we might have one lane blocked, but traffic will be able to get around that. The main operation is big equipment and we need to have less traffic while we're out there.
So minimal during the day there may be because there was a statement that said that there would be two-way traffics at all times, but we may encounter a period where it could go to one lane?
No, it'll still be two. There's enough pavement out there where there's always two.
And just so, to remind me and the public, because I always, every time this comes up, I'm like, I swear we just did this two years ago. So can, can we get a refresher on what was done two years ago and what would be different about this project?
We were sealing cracks. We were, think of it as being a Band-Aid. We sealed the cracks to try to keep the water from impacting the structural integrity of the base underneath it. They're going, this rehabilitation is full depth. They're going to be rebuilding the road.
The whole road.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, stay.
Yeah, wait, she has one more. Mayor Pro Tim, Councilmember Lee, was that all your questions? All right, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
So, thank you. And I knew you were going to, I didn't want you to sit down and answer this question. So I know the price tag now, of course, is bigger than it was two years ago. So not, not only is everything is more expensive, eggs, two years ago, but how much more work in this new, when you went back through, how much more work did you find that needs to get done than we did two years ago when we decided not to do it? I was just trying to make sure, give me an explanation of why it's so much more than...
Oh, well, the components of it, cement, asphalt, labor, they've all gone up. We are going an eight-inch depth, whereas last time it was six and a half. I was trying to design to the budget at that time.
So we're doing, I just wanted you to let me know that we're doing more work than we originally thought.
Yes, so there's actually more material going into it as well.
So it's not just everything went up. We're actually doing a little bit more work in the scope than we were two years ago. That was hard for me to compare the two, reading y'all's Spanish. Okay, all right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I'm just curious, are there any lessons to be learned here from the couple of years delay in doing this project? I know that, you know, it's, we've been working on it since, you know, really 2019. And I just, can, can you give us an estimate or an idea of what, if any, of the additional costs are caused by the delay in not doing it in 2019 or 2020 or whenever?
Roads take constant maintenance. And what we did a couple of years ago was just an attempt to hold it together. The structure's going to be much better. You're still going to have to come back and mill and overlay that surface 2032, 2031, 2030, somewhere in there. But if you take care of the surface, it, the deterioration won't get into the structure like it has now. And I think y'all have an approach now where maintenance is prioritized. But that's, that's my one lesson that I'd like to give on it, just stay after it.
It's important to note, it's not just the traffic count, it was the condition of the road from the pavement condition index. It's the combination of those things. It's not just because there's a high traffic count on it. And the other thing is, I know that we've made some changes internally because there was some budget revisions that caused us to miss being right after school was out. And I know we've made those revisions to make it easier to move forward with construction as well, which was not on their side, that was on our side. Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes. Two questions. First one is, what type of a maintenance schedule would you suggest? And then the second one is, what's the projected lifespan of the road before this needs to be done again?
With asphalt roadways, we'll call it a 20-year design, but that does not mean forget it for 20 years. That assumes that you're going to do asphalt. You want to take care of the surface. Once the cracks start developing in the surface and water can get down in there, the pavement structure starts falling apart. Depends on dry strength. We're putting in asphalt and cement into the pavement structure this time. But that still doesn't mean leave that top alone. Take care of the top and the rest of it will endure.
Is there a maintenance schedule, you know?
Like I said, asphalt, you just got to watch it, but typically seven to eight years. And you can mill it, overlay it, re-stripe it, and it's going to, you know, that's what they've done out here on 21 recently and it, the next thing you'll be worried about is speed because it'll be nice and smooth and people won't be driving too fast.
So then over, say, 20 years, you would do that twice?
Mm-hmm.
And then the next time, you do the whole thing?
Right.
Hopefully not. Hopefully you can just take care of it with mills and overlays. Take care of it in that top two inches.
If, the only reason that you're having to do the full-depth rehab is because you've lost the structural integrity. So if you can maintain that, but he can't guarantee that it's not going to...
Yeah, I completely understand. I'm more asking about for every other road and all other plans. Got an expert sitting here, so...
Yeah, it's like a house. Keep the roof on, don't have any leaks in the house, your structure will be fine. If it starts getting wet every time it rains and you get introduced rot, it'll fall apart a lot quicker.
Mayor Pro Tim Rod, are you, I'm sorry, you said two and that was two, so are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Sorry, I had one more question. If I remember correctly, the last time we bid this, they weren't working at night. So having them work at night, is that a higher cost?
No, they were going to work at night last time. We didn't have inspection at night like we do now, so...
Oh, okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, council.
Motion to approve.
I love it. All right. A motion from Councilmember Lee and a second from Councilmember Kirkland. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
All right, council, only, it's the civil engineer in me that sat through hours and hours of these meetings. We're going to do one more before we jump back. We're going to take care of nine B. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2023-48 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a construction contract with Archer Western Construction LLC to provide construction manager at risk services for a not-to-exceed amount of $24,49,35, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. You're on again.
Yeah, looks like I'm on show tonight. So very happy to be here to be asking for your authorization on this construction phase for the Archer Western for the last packages of the Simsborough Water Treatment Plant. So just giving you a little bit of background on where we started, where we are at. 2018, the city entered into a professional services contract with Frisian Ecos to do a preliminary engineering study. After that, when they provided their preliminary engineering report and their recommendations, we started with the design. During the design process, Frisian Ecos recommended the city to use the construction manager at risk delivery method. The city agreed. We moved on to request for qualifications for the construction manager at risk delivery method and we selected Archer Western as the most qualified consultant. 2022, as you probably remember, you authorized the construction contract for the G M P number one for the well drilling and the clear well. And in October, you authorized the approval of the construction contract for the G M P number two that included the packages of the water treatment plant equipment, the plant itself, the electrical instrumentation, filter and chemical buildings. What we are asking tonight is your authorization for the packages included in the G M P number three, which we advertised and opened bids on March 9. And now I'm going to refer you to the engineer to continue the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, as Fabiola said, it's really nice to be here with this last package of guaranteed maximum price. It includes four work packages. We thought we would take just a second and just kind of recap what you have already approved. This is the site map. It's turned sideways, so north is to the, to the right. That enlarged picture there is the wastewater, is the water treatment plant site itself. If you haven't seen this before, and some of you may not have, this is pretty interesting. This is a plant that will eventually have the capacity to treat 10 million gallons per day squeezed onto a site that's less than one acre. And so it's a pretty impressive feat and it looks really crowded and that's because it is. The guaranteed maximum price one, as Fabiola mentioned, included the clear well, which is the purple circle there. That was built first because we needed to get in there and get that done to make room for the rest of the construction to go on. And we had that design finished and we put that out kind of as an early bid package as well as drilling of the wells. And those well are being constructed right now. The second G M P was three packages. It was the treatment equipment itself, the construction of the, all the process inside the water treatment plant, and then all the electrical work that went along with that. And so that's the stuff that's all outlined there in yellow. And then G M P number three is the one that you're approving tonight. It included four work packages. It was the roads for the well field. It's the gathering pipeline in the well field to bring the water from all the wells up to the, to the treatment plant. It's the transmission line, the big transmission line, and the force main for the sewer lift station, and then all the site work at the water treatment plant itself. Just a refresher, the project team, the city's project team is Fabiola DeCarvalos, the project manager. Renee Aguilar is the construction manager and our project owner is Curtis Hancock. Cara Isles is our project manager. She's here in the audience today. I'm the project principal. Our construction manager is Brent Miller and Kenneth Barnes is our construction inspector. He's on site all the time. And then Archer Western's project team is Mark Tepera is their project principal and Thor Benson is our project manager. He's in the back of the room if you have any questions for him. So just as a refresher, the C M R process works. The construction manager at risk takes bids on the, on the, all the work. It's divided up into separate work packages. The C M R is allowed to bid on those work packages if they desire. If the C M R bids on the work, then the city reviews all of those proposals. If the C M R doesn't bid on that work, then they review the proposal. So that's the way this worked. The, there was four work packages. They were numbered six, seven, and eight. Six, seven, yeah, six, seven, eight, nine.
Come on, man, you're making the engineers look bad. There's four packages. You've got to come up with four numbers.
Six, seven, eight, and nine. I couldn't remember what the last one was. C C Carlton was selected for the first three work packages. That's the well field distribution piping and the lift station transmission line and the well field access road. And then Jordan Enterprises was selected for the wastewater, the water treatment plant pavement and site restoration. That's package nine.
Great.
So as I said, C M R evaluates these things. It's based on price and qualifications. It's a, it's a competitive seal proposal process. So these are the rankings for the different packages. I can answer your questions if you want to as we go through these. You can see that the last one, Archer Western, did submit a proposal, but Jordan's price was lower than there, so we recommended award to them. So back to you, Fabiola.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you. So the funding for this project will be from the certificate of obligation series 2023. We will provide a notice to proceed next month and the anticipated completion of the whole project in January 2025. There, we don't anticipate any service interruptions on water and wastewater, but there will be some traffic impact and we'll be coordinating with the property owners in the vicinity of the project. The contractor is supposed to provide a traffic control plan, which we'll be reviewing and providing comments. And we also use the building Bastrop page to provide updates on the project to the residents. With that, we ask you that you authorize the approval of this contract and we can take any questions if you have at this time.
Councilmember Crouch has a question.
I just had a question, excuse me, your scoring criteria, because it looked like the highest scoring person was number two or tied for second. So was the dollar amount included in your scoring criteria?
Yes, the dollar, the dollar amount is part of the criteria, so that factors in. So it's based on qualifications and price. And then those two things together, we have a rating criteria, so yes. So the highest score is the one that wins.
Highest score, lowest price, with considering those things together.
Yeah, I mean, it's theoretically, it's possible you could have somebody with a higher price, but better qualifications that could score better. And so that's why we do it that way, because you want the most qualified and the best price, so the best value to the city.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it was this one, maybe the other one.
Maybe call one more back? Because there was, they, two of them scored 88 and the lower price was awarded.
Yeah, I was just curious as to how you weighed that. Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions? It's a big day, council.
Motion to approve.
There we go. I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland and a second from Mayor Pro Tim Rogers. This is securing water for this community for decades to come. I'm super happy to be here when we are able to award this contract. Congratulations to the award winners and we'll be watching every dollar. Congratulations to the award winners, and we'll be watching every dollar. Those are a lot of tax dollars that you're spending, and we're looking forward to each of them being spent wisely. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. That deserves a round of applause. That is a really big deal for our community. All right, we're, counsel, we're going back to page two, and we're gonna go to citizen comments. The first person we have signed up for citizen comments is Roger Henderson. Mr. Henderson, if you would step forward, state your name and address. You will have three minutes.
Roger Henderson, 706 MLK Drive, Bastrop, Texas. I'm here tonight to speak about conspiracy and racketeering with the Bastrop City Police Department and the Bastrop Sheriff Department, okay? Also, I would ask you to talk with Ms. Stephanie, the actor interim police chief, on the issue of these three post-city police officers. The county officers will be dealt with, but the city police officers, that's the city council's duty to ask her about whether it's a process of evidence that she processed, okay? And if, in fact, there's evidence that these police officers committed the crime that they committed. She is aware of that evidence, and she has not, or the lawyer for the city, or the city manager she knew, has not talked to me about it. Mr. Hoffman did. I don't know if he addressed that issue, okay? Well, the racketeering comes in with the kidnapping, okay? Those officers kidnapped me from my neighborhood. It's been proven because the case was dismissed in the interest of justice by the local court system, okay? Those officers didn't plant drugs on me, as they have done other black defendants, which I have the evidence now. So there's at least four black defendants that this, that this has happened to around that same timeframe. This has not been addressed, okay? It becomes now conspiracy and racketeering with the city administration, okay? She also requested that the video was not shown to the public in her testimony. She gave testimony, open, an open due process hearing. Ms. Stephanie did. She also stated in that hearing that that evidence had been submitted to the DPS office and to the evidence, and it had. She lied. Those issues need to be addressed. It becomes conspiracy with the local administration, city administration. It becomes racketeering of a kidnapping. I've asked this police officer, I've asked this lawyer to deal with it, I've asked not this city manager, but nobody has taken up this issue. Now, I heard Ms. Barney, Ms. Barney Jackson speak a little while ago. I hate she left because I don't like to talk behind people's back. I said, "When is the community gonna come together?" She said, "Not in your lifetime." And then she got up here after that, and she prayed. That prayer was nothing, because that means that she had no faith in y'all to do y'all's duty, to do y'all's job. If she said, "Not in my lifetime," then who is she worshiping? She's worshiping no one. That's what her statement was, okay? So she's simply saying that she don't have faith in y'all, because I do have faith in myself that the job is gonna get done, one way or another. I'm gonna take up a petition to get rid of the city lawyer, the city attorney, because he is not advising y'all correctly in this matter, okay? It ain't going away. Those police officers have been federal defendants for three years. Now, had they not been guilty, or had, there was no evidence that they committed this crime, that stuff would have been over with. That federal judge would have been and kicked it out of court. He has not, okay? These need to be addressed. Those police officers have now been promoted in the Bastrop City Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. That's the end of your time.
Okay, I didn't hear the beam, but okay, I see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for, anyone else signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, counsel, we are done with citizen comments. And counsel, we are going to go into executive session, and we are going to go into executive session on item 10B. City council shall convene and disclose executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the consideration of action to approve amendments to the development agreement between the City of Bastrop and Colorado Bend LLC. It is 7:44, and we are in executive session. Okay, it is 8:18, and we are back in regular session. Counsel has given direction on item 10B. Counsel has given direction to both the city manager and the city attorney. They'll be working with the applicant, and they'll have, something will come back to counsel to review. So there is no formal action taken as a result of 10B being in executive session. So we are now going to go to the consent agenda. It is on page three. It is items 8A through 8E. Counsel is, does anyone want to pull an item from the consent agenda? All right, Madam Secretary, oh, is there anybody in the audience that wants to pull an item from the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the February 28th, 23 regular meeting and March 7th, 2023 special call meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-49 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a memorandum agreement with Bastrop County to use grant funds, if awarded, for the Riverwood Waterline Project as attached in Exhibit B, Exhibit A, I'm sorry, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-51 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an additional professional services contract with Corolla Engineers, Inc., to continue to provide the services of project management, construction management, and inspection for capital and non-capital improvement projects in the amount of $400,750 for approximately 12 months, attached in Exhibit B, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8D, consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 2023-04 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Building Block B-3 Code, Chapter 6, Section 6.5.003, and amending Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Section 3.01.001, International Code Council, International Code Family, and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Item 8E, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-52 by the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, responding to the application of CenterPoint Energy Resources Corporation, doing business as CenterPoint Energy Intex and CenterPoint Energy Texas Gas, South Texas Division, CenterPoint, to increase rates under the gas reliability infrastructure program, suspending the effective date of this rate application for 45 days, authorizing the city's participation in a coalition of cities known as the Alliance of CenterPoint Municipalities, requiring the reimbursement of costs determining that the meeting at which the resolution was adopted complied with the Texas Open Meeting Act, making such other findings and provisions related to the subject, and declaring an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
All right, I'm giving that one to Councilmember Lee, and I'm giving the second to Councilmember Crouch, who was a quiet whisper with a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. All right, counsel, we're going to page two, and we're going to item 6C. Receive presentation and update of the development process from Georgia Remus Intelligent Consulting. Ms. Creo, is he on his own, or are you gonna give him an introduction?
He's on his own.
He's on his own. All right, Mr. Remus.
Well, I wanted to give you, let's see, I need to get that slide, slides up. Here we go. I want to give you a brief update tonight, mayor and counsel, about where we are. I don't have any definitive stuff tonight, but this week, we're gonna be meeting with customer group tomorrow, as well as staff this week. I did want to give you kind of a brief overview of some of the perceptions that we're getting, and I think you'll understand once I get into it a little bit. Hopefully, you can see that we're, we're kind of in the middle of that diagram. We've kind of collected information and did some observation. I interviewed a lot of staff and customers in that first part, and, and through that process, it kind of bends off to the right, to the right there, where the customer group and the staff have come up with some issues, perceptions of issues that they face, as well as some initial recommendations that they would like to see. But the point I want to make on the graphic is, and I've said this at the very beginning the last time I was here, is I have a saying, "Trust the process," and my experience has been for 25 years, you, in working with different cities and counties, it's important to get ownership at each stage of the process. And so, I don't like to put the cart way, way ahead of the horse, where we're talking about recommendations, even though city manager likes to come forward with some, some low-hanging fruit and some simple things, which, you know, that's totally fine. So where we are right now is, we, we have a list of staff, of staff issues, we have a list of customer issues. I don't have that full list of customer issues tonight, but I wanted to hit a few high points, just to let you know their perception of things that are issues for them. I'm not gonna talk about recommendations, because I want the customer group to, and this is a group of about 10 or 12 individuals, that Sylvia has taken over as kind of a bi-weekly set of agendas, just to work through some of the issues and discussions. And I think the, the idea is, is my expectation as a third party is, I'm kind of like a therapist, and, and so I try to get people to understand, give, give an understanding of what their perspective is, and then put the perspectives together, and then get some agreement and ownership on that, so then we can go forward and come up with some strategies and recommendations. And that's kind of the last two white circles there. So we're kind of in a, in an intermediate stage, but I wanted to share just a few highlights of what I've heard from the customers. And then, the second part, which I'll talk a little bit more about, not a whole lot, is the survey that, that I sent out to a bunch of folks, and, and those predominantly were smaller customers. And so, the customer group is made up of more of the mid-sized and larger customers, and the survey results typically are from smaller customer feedback, homeowners, small businesses, those type of customers. So I, I want to talk through this a little bit with you. So the way I got the feedback is, is I met with this regular ad hoc group, it's now called Development Customer Advisory Group. It's just a formality so that, that Sylvia and I can manage the group, and it's, it seems more formal. Then, we also, I also talked to the Austin Area Home Builders Association through a meeting, and then I've done one-on-one customer interviews. Quite a few people, 10 so far, out of that initial set of, of customer group meetings, wanted to talk to me one-on-one, and I've spent time talking to them. We did a survey. These numbers are now out of date as of now, because I sent out a survey in first week or so of March, and then got a few responses, and then I sent out a second email blast, and then they started coming in like wildfire. And so, as of today, we've got 100 surveys, responses. That's a low percentage. I'll show you the statistics, but about 19 of those are pre-application meetings, and 17 for planning applications, and 63 for building applications. I've been getting those pretty regularly the last week or so. I also did staff interviews with all the department staff, and one, one of the things that I've done is also set in on the weekly DRC meetings and pre-application meetings to observe just how the staff's working with customers, you know, and just to understand the culture. And so, that's kind of the way I've received the feedback up to now. And the, the customer surveys has been real interesting. I've sent out 137 for the pre-app, and I got like 19 responses. It's about a 13% response rate. But the interesting factor of these three surveys is that if you look at the number of people requesting to talk to me one-on-one, that's about 42 out of the 100 want to talk to me one-on-one. So I've made my way through probably 20% of those, and most of them have come about in the last couple of weeks. And so, I intend to talk to each one that want to talk to me. It's probably more than we had anticipated with the survey. However, I'm finding, just talking to the first 10 or so, that 10 or 12 is that those are all small customers, and they have a very specific set of needs relative to my GOV, to just the process, understanding checklists, the ability to, to understand the terminology, some, you know, frustrations with certain projects, but, but I'm learning some good things, and I think that's gonna continue to go for a while, because I think that's a good way to get a better sampling of what, you know, the average person spends going through the process. So you'll, you'll notice that there's a pretty high number of, of one-on-one percentages based upon the number of surveys, and I hope to get a few more, but at this point in time, you know, I think we were, we were worried that we weren't gonna get but a couple, but we did get a lot more than we anticipated. So what I want to do with the, the customer issues that I'll talk briefly about tonight, as well as the survey response, and you can see the actual data, I will forward that. I think Sylvia and I talked about this, about being as transparent as possible about the information. Once I get the, the customers to look at the data, the information, and sign off on that, and then I get a little bit more kind of ongoing with the survey, I'll get that out to the council, so you can see some of the actual language and data. And then, and so, that's the first part of, of the effort, is just getting that on the, on the table. As we talked about at the very, very first, is, is the system is, is really made up of a lot of built, you know, pieces and components. I almost said it. The components really, when I talk to a customer or talk to staff, they have a concern in one of these, these areas or the other. And it's not all about the code, it's not all about technology. It's usually sprinkled throughout these, and I just want to touch base on some of the, the feedback and the perceptions I got from the larger customer group that meets every couple of weeks. It's not a total list. I've got eight, eight or nine pages, which I'm not gonna share tonight. I want them to take ownership. We gave them a homework assignment last week, two weeks ago, and said that they've got to review it and come back with comments, and, you know, we want to get them to say this is kind of what our beliefs are. So I want to go through just some of the key things. Some of these won't be surprising, some may be surprising, but it, there's, there's nothing like a major, major thing here. First, in the building permit process, so I'm gonna talk about the core processes first. So if we go back, I'm gonna talk about the yellow building block, and I'm gonna kind of go across and talk about most of those blocks. Without a doubt, the building process is too complex for small projects, and the, the plan, plot plan and the myGOV electronic is just overwhelming for small customers. And so, as we've talked about, you know, ways to improve that, and there'll be recommendations that'll come, there's gotta be kind of a, a result to how we take on that group of customers. And I think in the, in the contractors' world, you know, if you've got a master contractor or, you know, a master building permit, you don't always know who your subcontractors are gonna be. And so, one of the questions is, can we delay paying upfront for the trade permits until we, such time we know who they are, when we get to that stage, maybe, so we'll look at, you know, options for, you know, how to delay that, to make sure that the trade permits are issued, but they come in a timely fashion. And then, some feedback from the group was the sequencing of building inspections. A lot of times, what's in myGOV doesn't match what's in reality, and so we want to take a look at that. Feedback that we received from the, the business group is that third-party building review kind of limits access to consultants that do the third-party review, and so the consultants can't really get problems solved, so they gotta go through the staff. And so, there's a kind of a communication issue there, and, and so therefore, I think you've seen some recent kind of organizational issues, which will allow more inside capacity so that we can do a better job of, of that. So that's one of the examples of the cart way ahead of the horse, but, but at this point, I think that, that the logical, you know, capacity to be able to do some of the work is, and it's still at the same time retain the ability to have the third party is kind of is kind of a win-win, in my opinion. Zoning, without a question, the actual requirements of detailed design requirements is too early with the zoning requests, in terms of drainage studies and construction, anything that's required, it's got to be a little bit more conceptual, so that the zoning can be looked at. And I think there was also feedback with the B3 zoning process is very complex and time-consuming. Subdivision plating process, I think the overwhelming key thing that I heard was, from the customer group, was that subdivision requires up to eight stages of, from preliminary plan through final plat to construction plans. And they may be submitting the same information over and over, and so that, what they're looking for is some compressing that process, so that it makes more sense to, you know, from a construction standpoint, that you don't have to put as much money in upfront, when you don't even know whether you're going to get a preliminary plan approved. And so, that was kind of the feedback that I got. Application intake, MyGov intake process is very inflexible, with denials and simple items being missed. So basically, what I've heard from customers is that the submittal requirements are overly burdensome, and they might get kicked out for just a simple item, and they didn't get to get a complete review, and then they have to pay additional $250 to resubmit every time they do that. So what that speaks to is, understand the checklist and say, what's a bare minimum needs to get in, but what can be provided along the way during the process? So we don't stop people at the door and not let them get in the process. In addition, in some of the interaction issues, these are just some of the feedback that I receive, is, you know, in the people interaction, the culture, is that staff was perceived to be fairly rigid on interpretation and not really creative in terms of offering options. That's not all the time, that's project by project. And so, if the general consensus from the group is that staff's being inflexible, that's just something we have to contend with and understand, you know, are the regulations clear, you know, is there an issue with training? What are the underlying causes? And then, there was a perception from, the staff is not always neutral when dealing with projects and customers, both in review and perhaps in presenting at the hearing. And once again, that's not all the time, that could be one or two folks, as you, I think we talked about earlier, could be certain individuals. But the fact is, is if there's a perception, we've got to be able to understand if, you know, what that perception is, and is that a reality, or is that just a kind of a one-off? Legal opinions can take an extended period of time. Well, that was, you know, I guess, as you're trying to get through a process, and if you have to have a legal opinion, then that time might be detrimental in terms of getting through the process for your client. Clearly, the customers felt like there's not a point of contact, is not available to coordinate staff reviews and solve problems, so they kind of feel like they're on their own. They don't have an advocate inside that's going to be that point person, that's going to pick up the pieces and come back and try to solve problems. Now, traditionally, in most communities, that's handled in a variety of ways. You have very, very complex projects that take longer, and that's kind of project management. And smaller projects, you might have a point person, that's a technician that's going to follow up and make sure. But the key is, is having a point of contact, regardless of what level it is. And I think that, the customer group felt strongly about that, because of the time savings and the number of cycles that they have to submit and so forth. Now, regulatory framework, key issues, we're kind of moving to another area. Commercial and residential subdivisions are difficult to develop with the B3 code restrictions. I guess the predominant thing that I heard is that developers walk away because they can't predict cost and timelines. And so, if you're losing development because of the time and the cost predictability, then you're not reaping the opportunity to gain additional sales tax and other things like that. Now, that's a balance with what you want in the community in terms of the type of development, and, you know, not just open up the floodgates and say, we're going to do whatever. So I think there's that balance that I've heard on both sides of the discussion. There was a comment and discussion about the B3 code making all properties non-conforming, and exemptions are difficult to acquire. So commercial projects may be non-conforming, they would have to comply, and so I guess that's a question legality-wise, whether, you know, that that's an issue for customers. Transportation, drainage, and utility master plans are outdated, making it difficult to design projects, and I think you guys have spent quite a bit of time on that tonight, in terms of that. And I know city manager's working hard to provide some of those processes in place right now to improve the drainage plan, as well as, I think you talked about the water and wastewater tonight. And so, once again, a lot of these issues is looking backwards, you know? So you got to understand, if you've got a person that's a customer group or a single-family home, they're looking back six months, nine months. Now, what we have to look at is kind of what the snapshot is today, and things are changing fairly, you know, importantly. And so, we're going to move forward, and so what we want to do is continue to monitor what the perceptions are as we move forward. The last piece is the submittal checklist, I said earlier, need to be simplified and similar to other cities to create some consistency, because you do have a lot of developers that work all around. And so, I think trying to come up with an equitable way, that if they know that they can get in the process with the checklist, and, you know, I had a couple of examples that, the one I mentioned earlier, was that I had talked to one of my one-on-one customers, all the consultant or all this company did was process window replacements for a major window company. And it's a like-for-like, and the checklist that they had to go through had so many pieces that she ended up spending so much more time in Bastrop. And she said, when I got the checklist, and I got a project in Bastrop, I used to cringe. And she said, other surrounding communities, the checklist was very simple. And so, what that says is, you know, when MyGov was created, and when you looked at the checklist requirements, that there were some assumptions made. And so, what we've got to do is take a fresh look at small projects, so that we can weed those out, and not have that be so complex for the simple things that just can be taken out of the system and move forward. So that's something we've got to do. So submittal checklist and the MyGov kind of fit hand in hand, which, speaking of, MyGov, many customers feel the software is difficult to use and not very user-friendly. Specifically, the application sessions can't be saved, so they spend a lot of time getting it in place, and then they lose it, and they have to start all over. In some cases, engineers like to actually get the project started, and then they would upload the documents at a later date. Once they have them, well, they can't really do that, they have to do it all at once, which kind of crams it into one space. Too many clicks for simple projects, I think that's been a routine statement. Several processes are not set up in MyGov. For example, the subdivision acceptance process, I think there were a few others. And that process is very important, because that's the customer trying to get their subdivision finalized, and get it released. And right now, it's kind of in a paper form, and there are not a lot of releases on, in MyGov for that specific area. And so, trying to improve that would also make that acceptance process more efficient. Then the last piece is the development community that we talked to, wants more public access to the view of deadlines and timelines. They can get access to comments, but they can't see what the deadlines are and the timelines are, so they can't really gauge with their client, you know, what the expectation is. So those are some key things with MyGov. I think a couple of other points is that, and I think we've talked about this before a little bit, is GIS maps are out of date and do not include key parcel data, and I think the parcel data is what owned by the county assessor. So I mean, you've got some jurisdictional things there. Many records are still in paper form, making it really difficult to complete adequate research for both customers and staff. And I think we've talked about that with the city manager, about trying to improve that access, and append that to either the GIS at the parcel level, or at the, in the MyGov. So those are some technology issues. Physical space, this is the last slide on this area, is that there's really not a good counter or small conference room space available for this one-stop kind of shop for the small customers. A lot of times, you've just got to sit down at the counter, show them how to put stuff in MyGov, help them accept the paper plan, you know, facilitate that. And right now, it's just one-size-fits-all, kind of so to speak. You can't really come in and sit down and talk to somebody. You can, but it's not as feasible when, you know, I think we've talked about adding some additional resources, which will make it better. But the idea is that that has to be looked at, because I think small projects make up a large percentage of what you guys do. And so, taking care of the small, the mom and pops, the small homeowners, the, you know, the restaurants, whoever's coming in with some amendments. So that's a physical constraint, and I think we've begun talking about that as well. Okay, next steps, I know you guys have had a long night, so I'm going to make it quickly. We're meeting every two weeks with our Customer Advisory Group, starting tomorrow. I'm going to continue to observe the DRC and pre-applications meeting. I'm learning a lot about the culture, the training needs, what people are asking, and they're comfortable, what level of comfort they have with the materials that they're being asked. So it gives us some insights in terms of some areas that we can improve, both publications and technology, as well as just documentation. So the, once I finalize the issues after the meeting with the customers and the staff, I will get the, a synopsis out to you for the large customers, and then the survey direct response that shows you the ratings for all the questions, and some kind of notes that people made through that. The next step is going to be formulate recommendations. As I said in the first slide, I'm going to look at what the customer's recommending, look at what staff's recommending, and I'm going to try to, my best, to compile a set of recommendations that makes sense. And I have to say, recommendations, you know, you always have kind of two extremes, and what we've got to decide is, you know, what recommendations make sense going forward. And the most important aspect of recommendations is not the recommendation itself, the most important aspect is the action plan. And you're going to find that we're going to have some low-hanging fruit, you know? We're going to find that some of the stuff's just internal staff processes that we can do, you know, with the city manager directing. You know, there's going to be some things that's going to need a lot more evaluation when you get into regulatory or other areas. And anything that's going to require a public hearing is going to be, need to be evaluated at that level. So I think, once we look at, look at the recommendations, we're going to need to develop a strategy to say, this is what we can do now, this is what we're going to have to do, this is what we're going to have to further evaluate, and come back with options. Because I, as you know, you're going to probably have extremes in terms of perceptions, and so we've got to try to bring it back to the point that makes sense, whether it be codes or processes or replacement of MyGov, whatever. So that's kind of the next steps. I will get that information out to you, and then at the next meeting, when I'm back in town in this next weeks, then we will bring additional information to bear, so that you can continue to understand. My main focus is to facilitate. I'm not worried about the end product so much as the process that we go through. So I always stress, trust the process, because what we want is ownership from everybody. And if we don't have that ownership, we'll get to a hearing, and then we're fight it out there. So the point is, is it's better to create some ownership and clarity as you go through the process. And so, that's my goal, is to get to the end of the process, at least this phase, and say, you know, we have concurrence on where we're going to go, or we still need to study it further. So that's my, the way I operate, and I'm not so much worried about the end product as I am about how people feel that they've been heard. And that's the important part. So let me stop there, and if you have any questions of me, I'm more than happy to entertain those.
Thank you, Mr. Aremas. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, very good presentation. I would like a copy of that presentation, can we get that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Couple of other things, real quick. I definitely would be interested in seeing the survey questions. I don't think we've seen a copy of what questions are actually being asked. So I'd like to see that, and I know you said you're going to go over the responses in a later presentation, but I'd like to see what they're, what we're asking them now.
Okay. That's not a problem, we can get that. The results are pretty easy to compile, it's just that what you have to understand is they're going to be changing, because we're going to get more results.
Yeah, I'm, right now, I'm just more interested in actually seeing what we're even asking.
No problem.
Right, yeah.
I think you'll be pleased with the questions.
Yeah. And then, on the MyGov piece, I remember you, city manager, saying you were pretty well-versed in MyGov. Is it, is some of the changes or some of the concerns, can they be configured on our end to be able to make some of the changes they're requesting? Or does that, do we need to do a whole new software update on it? How can we take care of that upfront easily?
So two things. One, the MyGovernment Online that I'm familiar with is called MyPermitNow, which is what the county and everybody in the world uses. City of Bastrop, for whatever reason, we purchased MyGov, which is a different version, I will say, a lesser enhanced version of the other software. Right now, I brought forward some process amendments to the Construction Standards Board on how you get simple permits. If you're a residential customer right now, the tech has to select from one of 27 templates, just to process a residential permit. That could be something as simple as I'm adding a 220 to my house. It's not the software, it's how we built it.
Exactly.
Rebuilding it, because if you had a poor process to start, you just built that process into the software. So, as you're talking, I have MyGov open right now. I'm going to see what we can do, and what we can't do. What is missing from the software, and the staff and I talked about that today, even during an interview of a person in Hayes County who also uses MyPermitNow, is the ability that has a workbench. When I come into the office and I open the software, I have a workbench of what I'm supposed to do that day. As a manager on the backend, I'm able to move that workbench to match the workload, which I should be doing as a manager every day in the department. We don't do that here, it wasn't built that way, it's what's on, you know, what's on your dashboard is on your dashboard. Poor process in, poor result out. So we're going to try to work with what we have, and if that doesn't work, you're going to hear that it doesn't work. The community will say, we still don't have any relief from it.
But they do control the backend, I mean, they can make changes. It's not like that the MyGov owns the changes, they've got that ability, and I think they'd be willing to help on that. But I think it's just going to take some time to look at those missing pieces and see what we can do to improve. Because what some of the customers said is that, you know, you don't really have a starting point. You've got this list of 150 permits, and you've got to try to figure out where yours fits. And there's ways to try to look at that and simplify that, but I think the question is, is whether it makes sense to do that with the MyGov or to start fresh. But I think there's plenty to do to fix what's there, there's quite a few areas that can be improved. And I think the checklist area, for what a customer has to submit for one of these applications, probably is a good place to look at as well, especially for the small projects.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. For council as a whole, Bill, I know, Mr. Aremas, between you and the city manager, there's a point of, is it good money after bad? And, you know, do you pay to improve what you have, or do you need to use what you have and be bringing up a new process? And that, and I know you're not wanting people to jump to the answer, but that has to be a part of the process, is the evaluation of how much effort it is to start over as compared to continually trying to improve.
Well, and I kind of see that as a parallel process. I think what you have to do is make some changes that you feel are financially, you know, prudent, but then at the same time, begin, if you're looking at a new system, is to begin building that process, so that you have something to rely on once you, you know, leave the other one. So it's not a one or the other. I think what you have to do is take advantage of what you can with the current, and then expand, or take a look at what you can do with the new system, and then begin building that. I think we've got some process changes that need to be made, that we would want to do before we even consider changing over. Kind of thing, she just made the point, is, you know, we don't want to put bad processes into
Correct.
Into the system. So to me, that's one of the examples of stuff that's got to be looked at further. It's not something necessarily would have to go to a public hearing, but it's something that's going to take some time to be able to evaluate with the staff, to figure out how that's going to work.
Absolutely. Councilmember Crouch?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you, George, for putting forth all the time, and thank you, Sylvia, for hiring George and coming at it from a different perspective. I know we had a survey on our website before, and there was one person filled it out, and I think I was the one that did that. I know I filled it out, so I
And you filled it out really rudely, as I'm teasing, I'm
So I'm so glad that we kept our head down, and we realized there was an issue here, and that we found a different way to identify it and fix it. And, because the whole thing, at the end of the day, should be about customer service, and how we can make this whole process easy for our and how we can make this whole process easy for our residents to come in and get a permit, and, and do the whole, the whole thing. And so, we, we, now we know what we have to fix, and we've identified that, and it, and kudos to, to everybody here for, for moving and getting to that, and getting to that point. You're, you're correct, we have simplified, or we're trying to simplify the process. I'm glad we looked further into the complaints that we had, and that this whole process of getting it more user-friendly, developer-friendly, subcontractor-friendly, and, and building contractor-friendly is just going to help Bastrop grow, Bastrop grow a little faster, because we need to speed everything up, in order to keep up with, with everything. And it'll help us generate some sales and property tax, which we need to fix our roads, and, and pay for our water and wastewater plants. So, the, the whole process of identifying all this and fixing it is just going to help better Bastrop overall, in the long run. So, thank you very much for putting forth all the effort, and, and identifying all the things where we can, where we can use it. So thank you for that.
You, you left off making it easier for the residents.
And, and staff as well, because it's not fun to get
Yes, and staff. And I will say that the work thus far, I know we keep talking about the B3 code, and I know we keep talking about the B3 code, but the relief that's being felt is that we understand the subdivision development process, we understand the site development process, we understand that those things can run concurrently. George did this for the city of Austin, and does this for numerous cities, as do I. So, it is a different perspective, that you can compress the timeline that Bastrop has this way, this way. And, and it is very possible, and you can still protect your regs, and you can still do that, it is really just a different process. So, I wanna caveat that there are some very good things in the B3 code. There are some very good things in the B3 code, but it's gotten a bad rap altogether, on its implementation and its execution. And that's not a fault of anybody I'm trying to blame, we were doing a lot of things very quickly, trying to launch the technology, the code, the process, et cetera.
Keep up with the legislature.
Yes, keep up with the legislature. And, you know, I remember in my interview, when I told you guys, Corpus Christi did the same thing, we, we lumped four different departments under one roof, and called it a one-stop shop. When I came here, you guys were talking about creation of a one-stop shop, and I was going, wah, wait, you, wait, wait, wait. Same thing, every division speaks a different language, it requires a translator, it requires a completely different customer service approach, that we're getting there. It's, it's, you know, I'm trying to hire staff as fast as possible, but the customer service, the servant's heart, the, the being able to help the person who doesn't even understand it, we're getting there faster than we can do any code amendment. And that, I think, is gonna make the biggest difference.
Thank you, city manager, thank you very much, Mr. Oremus, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
All right, council, we're gonna go from 9A, I am so sorry, I'm looking in the audience, and I feel bad, we're gonna do 9A, and then we're gonna do 9E, I'm just giving you advance notice. Item 9A, consider action to approve a work plan for the diversity, equity, and inclusion board, Ms. Creo.
Let me pull that, you said 9A, and which one?
9A, and then we're gonna do the budget amendment.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Because Ms. Smith is, won't make eye contact with me.
So yes, I apologize for Ms. Lowe, for bearing with us till almost nine o'clock. So, one of the things that the council requested at the creation of the DEI board was a work plan, that would be presented to the council, and we would work through. So, as we began that particular topic, we talked about, okay, what is it that we are actually trying to solve? And we brought some statistics, and I think there was some, perhaps a misunderstanding of what the DEI board could and should work on. And the group, a very diverse group of people, has come together, and we've identified four areas, I believe it's five, Colin, can you advance it? I don't know if there's anything beyond that. Oh, so, no, there's nothing beyond that. Sorry, I'm gonna refer you back to your packet.
It's page 92 of the packet.
Yes, so, the first one is to engage in activities, forums, and community gatherings, and events that promote a mutual understanding, as well as encouraging residents to connect with one another. The particular task attached to that goal is focusing on engagement with, at the Boards and Commissions Fair, working with the city to conduct resident surveys, to serve all areas, specifically underserved areas, on a variety of topics, and to work with the Parks Board, the St. David's Foundation, and the city council to create the murals in Delgado and Kerr Community Park. The second goal is to create strategies to distribute information to people of different cultures in culturally appropriate ways. And the task included in that is an easily accessible information piece regarding all area available ser, services, and we've talked about a magnet, and a logo, creating a location map where services are located, and assisting in the creation of informational segments, when we go back into executive session, what is being shown on the commercial, so to speak, on the screen, that very powerful tool, we can continue to share information. And then working with Visit Bastrop to create an improved welcome packet. That one hurts my heart, because me moving here, the, what you get when you turn on your utilities, the first three bullets say, I'm gonna disconnect you if you don't pay within a particular time period. That's what's handed to us, that's what's handed to a resident. No offense, Ms. Waldron, because she's, you know, part of her job is making sure that we collect the dollars, but not very welcoming, and a lot of our documents are not translated into multiple languages. So Visit Bastrop has stepped up to the plate. So you can see from the work plan, it is a coordination, it is a partnership, and we've got a lot of moving parts to the work plan. And it's our first step at trying to engage, and making sure that people at all levels in our community are engaged, and that we're reaching them. That in and of itself is a feat. How do you get there, and what are they looking for, and how do they know, and how do you reach them? And we went through a lot of iterations of that topic. But Sheila Lowe, who's the chair, to that board is here, so if you have any questions for her, or I, happy to take them.
Ms. Lowe, is there anything you'd like to say to council?
I'm sorry you had to stay so late.
All right, Mayor Protem Rogers?
Wow, that's a lot of work, so thank you. That's, you know, it looks like only like this much, but I know that's a lot of work, and I, I totally like the welcome packet, it is important that we all feel welcome, whether we've been here forever, or, still. I wanted to commend you guys, all of you, for the hard work you've done, and thank you for moving it forward. It's an important task, and I'm glad we're working on it.
Thank you. All of the critical phone numbers, like what do you do if they don't pick up your trash? What do you do if you're having problems with your water? Who do you call if you've lost your power? And a couple of the people on the, on the board were like, we need the magnet, and like, my mom still has the magnet, but that's, that's a whole different thing. But, it was times the old ways are the best ways, you know, the, here's who you call in case of an emergency. And, we were talking about a, a magnet like that, if that was a part of the welcome thing, you need, how powerful that is for everyone. So, as a liaison to that board, I have just really thoroughly enjoyed it, and I, I thank Ms. Lowe for being the chair, and they're a great group of people to work with. I think the next person that turned on their light was Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Thank you. I actually still have my mother's magnet, and she's been gone 23 years now, so, yes, I love my magnet. So, I, thanks for a great presentation, for the update on what's happening with DEI board. I wanted to add a couple of nuggets in, because, in talking about surveys, I know that the board met, and there's one that's gonna be coming out for the community soon. I am on the library board, I started serving as a liaison for the library board, and one of, one of the things the library board's trying to do is increase programming, in different age demographics, and race demographics for the library, and they need input from the community. And we talked about how long it's been since they did a survey, and I recommend that they get with the DEI board, and they plan to, and I encourage the DEI board to get with the library. That could be another way of, you know, gaining a partner in the community for the board. Also, earlier you mentioned the murals, and I'm glad that you mentioned additional funding, because the, in just that initial discussion, we realized, to produce a quality mural in both of those locations, might take a little bit more money than St. David's is willing to give me, so, I'm glad that you're looking at that as an option, you're working with the Cultural Arts Commission, the Arts Center is also looking to partner with the DEI board, so that's another community partner. And, earlier when we were just a committee, when the DEI was just a committee under then-manager Paul Hoffman, we had talked about doing a, something called a project that heals, and, and knowing that we may need additional funding, I think that that would be a good topic to revisit, because then you're pulling from all different groups and organizations, and everyone's participating in this effort to create a project that heals the community, by bringing, kinda breaking silos, and bringing all those groups together. So, just kinda wanted to throw out some additional options and resources for the board to take a look at, as we kinda go down this journey.
I like that, because it definitely takes a village.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee, I think the next slide was Councilmember Kirkland.
Certainly, so, nice job, DEI board, and Sheila, thank you very much. 1C, it lists the Parks Board, St. David's Foundation, and city council for creating the mural, I just wanted to add to the document, the Cultural Arts Commission, yeah, and you had that in your slide earlier. Thank you.
That was it, okay. And Councilmember Lee, did I cut you off before you were done? Okay, Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, great job, the, I'm very heartened to see, you know, the welcome packet, and things of that nature. I do think, as the city manager indicated, you know, we do a lot to not make our, you know, residents feel welcome, and, and especially for new residents, I think it's really important. And, I know the folks that work in our restaurants will be heartened to see that, because we are welcome, 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 is our thing. So, thank you very much.
To really give a shout-out to Visit Bastrop, who, one of their board members, I believe is Carrie Fossler, had come to a DEI meeting on invitation, went back to her board, and talked to her director, who's sitting right over there, and she immediately came to the very next meeting and volunteered. I think she was voluntold, but we're gonna say she was volunteered to do it. And it's not just the welcome packet, hopefully, that we're gonna be working on, it's, how do you get a permit, and who do you call? When I first moved to Hayes County, they have a service called, I think it's like 360, because they, like us, have multiple providers. I don't know where I'm supposed to go get electricity from, I come from a city where the city did it all, so it was like one call. This service did it all for you, they coordinated, it was, and the utilities paid for it, Purnellis Electric paid for it, and all of the other electrics paid for this particular service. So, maybe we can get something like that off the ground, where it's not so hard to try to figure out, who's your service provider, other than here, here's this map, go try to figure it out, it's not me, it's not us, so.
Thank you very much. All right, Councilmember Crouch?
I, I just wanted to recognize the DEI board, because whenever the board was formed, I was one of the people that didn't vote for it, but I, I really, seeing it a, a year later, and looking at the things that's being done with it, I, I had no idea that we'd be sitting here looking at these things, on, on ways to help the community and, and different groups. So, kudos to you guys for forming the board, putting it together, and then finding multiple ways to help everybody in, in town. So, thanks for, thanks for doing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. I know time flies, but it hasn't been a year, it's been more like about seven months, which makes the work they've accomplished that much more appropriate. All right, so, do we need an approval of this? I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the addition of the Cultural Arts Commission in 1C.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland with the addition of the Cultural Arts Commission in 1C, and a second from Councilmember Lee, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council, the motion passes unanimously. We're gonna be going to item 9E, so Ms. Smith can actually get home this evening before us. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-05 of the city council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for fiscal year 2023 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, establishing an effective date, and move to include on the April 11th, 2023 city council agenda, I think you mean consent agenda, for a second reading.
I can mean consent agenda, of course, good evening, mayor and council. I'll try to be, I'll try to be quick, I think the hot amendment is about 10 or 11 down the, down the road, so we'll go through this. Increase in revenue, 205,093, 142 is sales tax, and then we wanted to add our grant revenue for our crime victim advocate. On the city secretary, I think we're all aware that there's most likely going to be a runoff, so while I was doing a budget amendment, I went ahead and just added that 25,000 in there. On the police budget, this is just adding that position, now that we know that we've got the grants, the position has been hired, and this is just to add it to their budget. Amendment for organizational, so we had a few adjustments in this fund, or this division. The 380 agreement is final, we have paid the last payment, but we didn't do a very good job of estimating what that last quarter was gonna be. There was interest involved, and so the 195 finalizes that agreement. And then also group insurance, I know during the budget process, we talked about going from 35% to 50% dependent coverage, we did a poll, and we've had more people participate and add, which is, which was the point, but we needed to increase that budget line item to cover that. The fire department, there was, there is an amendment to add a new position of executive administrative assistant, this was being talked about as a fiscal 2024 request, but it has become necessary for us to go ahead and fill that position. Development services, so I'm not bringing a budget amendment in dollars at this point, just establishing, I know that the city manager has gone over with y'all a new organizational chart, and new positions in that, in that division, and so these are just laying out those new full-time FTEs. I do anticipate having a budget amendment before the end of the fiscal year for this. And, vehicle equipment and replacement fund, this is an amendment to go ahead and budget for the loss, and so, you'll notice, next month, in the financial report, we won't have a variance on that fund. Water wastewater operating fund, we had some inclusions, our wholesale agreements have finally kicked in and started happening, we've seen some billing on both sides, so this is just to adjust the budget for that. And also, the new wells out at Excess Ranch, needed an amendment to add those pumping fees. I led with this, before the amendment, I know it was in your packet, I don't know if y'all have any questions, I'm truing up Visit Bastrop's contract for fiscal 2022, based on actual revenue, that we now know we got in fiscal 2022, but I'm also fixing 2023, as we estimate that we know we're gonna come in where we originally budgeted, so I'm going ahead and adjusting current revenue as well. So when I get to the budget amendment, the 403 is for increasing the revenue this current year, and then the other adjustments for, are for each of the tru-ups for each year, and also $30,000 in addition to this, for the special events. I know we talked about that at the last meeting. Bastrop Power and Light, just have had a lot of activity, this is just increasing their revenue, and increasing their expense line item for line extension fees, they've been very active with a lot of projects that are going on around town. And, this last amendment is just to actually book the certificate of obligation series 2023 that was sold in January, so it's just getting all of those numbers into the budget. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer.
Ms. Smith, is there any comments that you wanna make on the request? You don't have to, I, you've sat here, and I didn't know if you wanted to make it, and give you an opportunity to share.
Sure, so, I just wanted to address the additional $30,000 in the event fund, the hot fund event, event fund, and just let you all know where we stand so far, so it's been six months of the year, and we have distributed 66,000 of that 75,000, we have 9,000 approximately remaining. We have $9,000 approximately remaining. And we have $16,000 in pending approval applications. So we're already would be, you know, a few thousand into that $30,000, and there's more talk and discussion about other applications coming forward. And just to sort of monetize this for you, that the $66,000 that we have issued already, when we did the pre-economic impact calculator, it's an estimated impact of 1.5 million. So I just wanted to share that with you.
So given that you're already into the 30 that you don't have yet, are you comfortable with the 30? Or, because it's a healthy fund. Do you want to get a little bit more now?
I'll take more now. Because we can roll it. I gave you the 30 number, but since that time, the applications have been coming in.
So I don't know which is easier for Tracy. Everything's ready to go now, and she's got it balanced. Is it easier for her to come back when she needs it? Or is it easier to change it now? What's easier for you?
I mean, we can change the number, and it'll be amended on the second reading.
So do you want, instead of 30, 50?
And then we'll roll it over, I would assume, into next year.
Oh, absolutely. You'll follow all of the same processes.
Okay.
So Council, if, when someone's willing to make a motion, you may want to consider increasing that to 50,000. And they either do or they don't, and we'll take care of it at the second reading.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Speak now, or forever, at least till the next amendment.
Regarding this, no, we're fine, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that is an awesome return on that investment. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes, I just wanted to check and see, on the revenue, especially sales tax, I suppose, are you only, are you adjusting from actuals? Or are you going ahead and projecting for the rest of the year based on the actuals?
So I'm adjusting for, we need to balance this budget amendment. I'm not increasing it by the 9%, we're running ahead, no.
Okay.
She's way too conservative for that.
That's what I expected.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crouch, is that it? Councilmember Crouch?
I was curious about the, that loss from fraud. If you had any update on, if they found anything, or anybody's punished, or if we're getting anything back.
No, and we were told at the onset that that would be very unlikely.
Yeah, okay. Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah. It takes time.
Was that it? Councilmember Crouch? Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, and I, please forgive me for not remembering all the different grants you bring us. So how long is the, for the police grant? How long is that? Is it for one year?
Mm-hmm.
So do we have a plan on how to pay for it after the grant gets done?
Well, it will be a new position in the fiscal 2024 budget.
But I mean, are we looking forward that we can afford it after we? Okay, I just want to make sure that we're, money's going to run out.
And we said that on the onset, that it was just a one-year grant.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're not hiring somebody to fire them in a year. That's just making sure that we're making a plan and knew what we're doing. All right. Then I move to approve with the 50,000 change in the Hot Funds.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers to approve Ordinance 2023-05 with the amendment of increasing the Hot Funds from 30,000 to 50,000, and a second from Councilmember Lee. Council, are there any questions? Is everybody clear what they're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. A whole bunch of the items that are left are Tracy's, so we're going to go back to the beginning and pick up everything that I've hopped around. I believe the very first item is 6A, receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending February 28th, 2023.
All right. So general fund, strong. Revenue exceeding forecast, 7.3%. Sales tax is still at 9% over forecast. Development fees are running about 33% over forecast. Impact fee fund, 11.5% short of forecast. The electric fund made up some ground this month because of the variance we had last month, but it's still in a warning category of 4.6. I do believe that we'll be able to make that up over the summer months, but we will see. Keep an eye on that. All other funds are performing positive in revenue on the expense side. We've really fixed this variance with the budget amendment, so all other funds are positive to budget. If you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron? All righty, we're going on to item 6B, receive presentation and update from the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation from the March 27th, 2023 meeting. Ms. Carrillo?
Thank you for that. This one does have a presentation. Yes, please, thank you. So this is a presentation that was provided to the Board last night, and it is an attempt to keep the Council in the loop about what is going on. So the first one is, we did welcome Drew Chance, who is the new Marketing and Business Development Manager for the BEDC. He will be working side-by-side with Candace, touching our Main Street businesses. We are developing an ad hoc Main Street business group who has shared some concerns and wants to meet with the city. So Drew will also be the conduit for that, along with Candace at some point in the future. So financial summary, revenues over expenses. The fund is doing really well. They are bringing in more than they are spending. And I say "they" because that's just not there yet. Sales tax revenue is also running ahead, a percentage and a half. Not a whole lot, but it is above forecast. The next one was the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Tracy gave that as well. The fund is healthy and doing what it's supposed to do. There was a discussion on an amended organizational chart, and this is the new proposed organizational chart. It was a very flattened organization. Many of you know Angela as the Operations Manager. You know Gene as the Project Manager/ Workforce Development, and then Drew now being Small Business Development. When the Director is out, they don't have anybody to report to, because they're all equals. So we made a minor modification and made Angela the Operations Manager, truly the Operations Manager. So she has some discretion and control over schedules and office time, et cetera, et cetera. We never leave the ship alone, so to speak. Here's the meat and potatoes. We talked a lot about existing projects. We talked about the actual business park and those expansion plans, and how we can make that actually be successful, and then capital improvement plans with the city. So we have a lot of work going on. So I want to start with the disclaimer about, there was a lot of rhetoric that the EDC and the city don't really work well together. Well, you're going to see in the plans. The city's doing a lot of work under what has been funded by EDC. So these are some of the existing projects that are going on. All of the projects are in a certain state. A lot of them are in preliminary engineering. This goes back to the discussion about, we lure somebody here, and then ta-da! You've got to now put in all of this infrastructure that may or may not have the project come to fruition. And/or, there is a request to modify a development agreement or an incentive agreement because we hadn't taken into account certain things that would be needed on the site. And that, I can point to a variety of projects regarding that similar situation. So again, knowing way more in advance, preparing the site with infrastructure-rich areas will make that park just go that much faster. Then we have to have the conversation. So the business and industrial park, I'm using my pointer, but I don't see that it works. Oh, here we go. So this is the layout that was approved, and this is that layout that heads out into Tahitian. There's another layout that heads out into Pine 406 and the city, and the Board, for the thought that there was perhaps no desire to have residential traversing through that business park. The county would like to see that transportation. The school would like to see that transportation, and obviously, the city would like to see that transportation. So we are working with the engineer, the EDC engineer, and making those connections come to fruition. They obviously not only help the business park, they help what's on Lover's Lane, they help the Colorado Bend, they help Pine 406, they help Tahitian. It's a lot of win-win with a good circulation pattern. I know this text is hard to read. These are all of the capital improvement projects that are working in coordination with the city. We've recently taken on South Street. You guys, that was part of what was originally the Colorado Bend. Agnes, Blakie, there's a variety of projects here that are in various states of completion through the city CIP process. And we'll just continue that. Right now, if all goes to plan and you have the April 11th meeting, we'll take on that other additional project traversing through the Lover's Lane area. This is also a toughie. So we talked about the policy. We had to bring to the Board what's up with the policy and why aren't we following it. Talked about, here's a little bit about the history of the EDC and how it was created, and why it was created, and what we are expected to do as a Board. We did touch a lot on the independent-dependent relationship. And it's that adolescent teenager who believes he's able to be out of the house but not quite paying his own bills. That, it's a horrible analogy, but that is where we are. The EDC can do some things, but it can't do anything without approval from the city council. So it's a hard fact to face, but it is the fact. That's the way the statute is written for a reason. It does protect the residents and the taxpayers from just waste. The policy talks about business recruitment, business retention, workforce development, maximizing the business park, and promoting the media and entertainment industry. My conversation with the Board was, this is the existing policy. We probably don't need to touch it today, but what we do need to touch, you'll see in the next slides. This is what's listed in the policy right now is coordination effort. There's a lot of those bullet points we're not touching, i.e., the coordination going through the city manager's office, the city manager's office being aware of any projects, sharing non-disclosure, sharing where non-disclosure is possible and not possible, so that we can coordinate our own infrastructure needs and make sure that we're matching. That isn't happening. It is happening now. The EDC staff is now attending the Development Review Committees on Thursdays. The EDC staff is also attending staff meetings on Tuesdays, I believe we've moved the date to. And also, any pertinent meetings related to infrastructure or other projects as it pertains to development and pre-application. This is a toughie, because the system processes and accountability. They are still learning the ROI software. So what is presented to the Board and what is presented to the Council is sometimes questionable. The piece that's in here is, there is a significant ROI to BISD that we often don't take into consideration. When ad valorem increases, BISD loses state funding. And is that a project that is viable for not just the city, the county, but we also have to think about our partners with the school? And then the sale of what is a quote-unquote "good" project, and we're going to talk about that in the metrics. We don't really know what success is defined as. There is no metric that says this is a good project. Yes, every project will have a different metric, but we shouldn't be presenting projects that have a negative number associated to them for any one of the entities for a long period of time. We may have a negative number to start, but it should be offset pretty quickly so that the taxpayers, again, aren't on the hook for long periods of time. So this one was a toughie, too. What are we actually doing? And I know it sounds like a rough slide, but we do not have the data available to tell you what industry gaps exist. I don't have anything to tell you who should be here, who's here, who's coming here, who wants to come here, what our workforce should look like to come here, what we should be working with BISD to build to come here. We have a lot of anecdotal data that's coming from our partners, so to speak. And the example I used last night was, some of the staff had come to me and said, "We need a dental hygienist program because we're short dental hygienists." And I said, "Well, who says we're short dental hygienists?" Well, the dentist up the street came to us and told us it's hard for them to attract dental hygienists. And I said, "Well, we need to ask the question. Is it hard to attract because they're paying properly? Because it's hard to get here? Because we've done the analysis? How many dentists are in the area?" So we don't have that level of analysis right now, but we're gonna get there. But it truly goes back to, what are we actually doing with ourselves? What are we doing? What are we attracting? I'm not going to send a staff member to ICS, see the shopping center conference in Vegas. We're not going to Vegas. We're not going to California to go see any film sites. I got to figure out what we need here today. We talked about a lockhart study, where it says a production assistant. Okay, so what does that production assistant really do? Is it a production assistant at the Amazon warehouse? Is it a production assistant at a plant? Is it a production assistant at Martin Marietta? Is it a production assistant at any one of the various plants? Because the skill the school will help, hopefully help us teach, is different, right? A production assistant at an Amazon warehouse, we want the kid who's studying robotics. We want the kid who is good at math and mechanical. And that's different from the production engineer who's watching gauges, right? Who's good at filling out reports and good in English because he needs to write a report or type out a report. So just trying to find what that actually is so that we can build those fruitful partnerships has been a challenge, to say the least. This brings us to our joint meeting on April 17th, where we've got to talk about what it is we're doing. Where would the Council like to see the EDC go? And how do we build the metrics that the Council believes is a good indicator of success? That is a regularly scheduled EDC meeting. It is not a regularly scheduled Council meeting. So I'm hopeful that you're available, and I'm hopeful that it won't be but a few hours on that particular day.
Council, the city manager originally proposed
Counsel, the city manager originally proposed the 17th or the 18th, but the 18th is the candidate forum for all the city elections. So, I talked her out of the 18th, so that's why we're double, really hoping that you guys can make yourselves available on April 17th. But the city secretary will be following up with you. I believe that's the end of the presentation, ma'am.
I believe that's the end of the presentation.
Counsel, do you have any questions? I'm sorry, Councilmember Crouch?
I was just, can you give us an update on your replacement?
Which replacement?
For BEDC.
So, let me help with that. Since I'm on the board, one of the things that we want to take advantage of is what she's just gone over with ROI software that's not understood. There's a lot of processes that need to be in place. And there's also a significant election that's happening in May. They're talking about doing quite a bit of groundwork and then having a conversation about starting the next search. Because there's some stuff that needs to be straightened out so that someone can be successful and not walk into, we still have all these things to resolve.
Yeah, and I just, the only reason I'm asking is because I want to get her down to like 80 hours a week or something.
Totally understand.
And that was a conversation with the board.
Yeah, so she's getting a 25% increase in pay, but that doesn't make more than 24 hours in the day, and we share that. But not fixing some of the things was creating some of those extra hours. So, she was well-aware and agreeable to that timeframe.
Yeah, okay, good deal.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I just really wanted to comment on the "what are we doing?" piece of it because one of the webinars I watched for TML was called Retail to Rooftops, or it might be reversed, I might be saying it in reverse, but I think that, thinking back on that last year's training, that was one of my most interesting ones. And one of the more compelling parts of that webinar to me were when smaller cities are marketing big, like, we can't bring Silicon Valley here if we don't have the infrastructure and the amenities that the Real Housewives might need for that type of business to come in. They want to make sure our education piece is there when they bring their children here. And one of the focuses of that webinar was that I found most interesting was making the best use of our land and understanding how much revenue every single parcel of land brings to your city. So, if you're putting a big-box store on a piece of land, how much more revenue would you get if you're bringing in smaller stores that take up, you know, you can put 20 smaller stores on one piece of land that a big-box store might pick up. And then, it also focused on your small businesses and small home designs, tiny homes, as they say. So, and one of the most important parts of that webinar to me was, when we're marketing for smaller businesses, we should have a designed marketing plan for every business we're approaching. Everyone is not the same. I always tell people, you can't talk to every person the same way. Everyone responds differently, everyone reacts differently, they might not react the same way a friend would react. And that was the focus of that webinar, was you have to know who you're marketing to. And you have to, when, if Target, and everybody loves to say Target, if Target is coming, you should be able to say, "We have a piece of property right here, it's shovel-ready, you can move in tomorrow, this is how many homes are around it." And we should have that type of breakdown for everyone that we market. And that's what I'd like to see us get to. We could all want a Target, but there are smaller versions of some of these big-box stores that are looking for smaller areas that we may not even know are out there. If you need a volunteer to go to Vegas, I will go. But we need that knowledge to, we need someone that's going to be designated to understand what we should be looking for, what businesses we should be targeting, because Neiman's Marcus might not do well in Bastrop. So, it's kind of unrealistic to think that we need a Neiman's Marcus, even though I would like one. So, I love that "what are we actually doing?" piece because I think once we get it all lined out, we do need to have a strong marketing strategy to bring what we need in to sustain Bastrop long-term. So, thank you.
So, the adage is rooftops breed retail. And they do, right? Where the houses come, the retail's going to come. Rest assured, by the time Target is looking at a site here, they know everything within a 20-minute windshield time, a 40-minute windshield time, and a 60-minute windshield time, and what the demographic is in each one of those windshield times. What they're coming to us to figure out by the time Target is here, what they're coming to us to figure out is, what can you give me to make me come here? I already know I want to come here. But let's make it a little bit more juicy, because I could go here, I could go to Hutto, or I could go here, I could go to Buta, I could go here, I could go to Kyle, I could go here, go to College Station, Bryan, the number of questions. So, part of that is, okay, what do we actually want to incentivize? What is that and what does that look like? And if we truly are going to incentivize something like a Target, you have to understand that it is going to take out some of your small businesses. You have to be prepared for that. And are you prepared for that? If we're a big shop, local shop, small, is that who we're wanting to incentivize? Yes, it puts an into the tax base. So, those are the kinds of questions that we, as a community, need to define ourselves as.
And also, how do we educate our smaller businesses so that they don't lose revenue? Because that's another one of the things that the video talked about, was if you're selling a $20 or $30 candle in your store and somebody can go to Walmart and buy one for $5, how much revenue are you going to make if you're only selling candles? And it talked about educating your small business owners how to make their stores maybe more diverse, instead of just offering candles, offer other products that would entice people to come into your store. So, I think it would also be important to ensure that we're still engaging our small stores, that, you know, our mom-and-pop stores, so that they don't feel threatened by the newest and greatest big box that comes to town. So, that's a good point. I think it's very important that we keep that in mind as well.
And Drew is a small-business guy, so he worked at Sam Houston State, helping businesses write business plans, for example. And so, we have a lot of small businesses who are struggling, who are coming to the EDC, asking about, where's the microloan program? And the reality of it is, while we have the money for the microloan, there has been no performance metric or application actually put into place. So, we haven't really decided what makes a successful $10,000 microloan yet. So, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to leverage his skill set.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and it's also important, knowing that we can't do, that we've been limited on annexation, it makes it really important that, from a land use standpoint, that we're making the very best decisions on what to do with the land that is still within our city limits. All right, Counsel, we're jumping all the way over to the bottom of page four. Who are you with? Are you wanting to go home?
Yes, ma'am. 9J.
I was, I thought that might be. Counsel, we are going to 9J. I am so sorry. I have texted every person in this room, "Who is the guy in the coat? We're going to 9J. Hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-06 of the City Council of Bastrop, Texas, approving zoning change for 1.998 acres of the Nancy Blakely survey abstract 98, Bastrop County, Texas, from P2 rule to PS core, providing for findings of fact, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for enforcement, providing for proper notice and meeting, and establishing an effective date, and include on the April 11th, 2023 consent agenda for the second reading." If you're ever here again, the reason we thought you weren't here was because you didn't sign up to speak, so we didn't think there was an applicant here. And I apologize, because I would have tried to call you earlier. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I'll try to make this short and just hit the highlighted points. It was a pretty detailed staff report, so let's get started. So, what you can see on your screen there is actually the applicant property, next to 2011. It's there at the intersection of 969 and Highway 71. Again, it was rezoned in 2019 to P2. The request tonight is to be P5. What you can see is they've handled all their drainage plans and things have been completed and approved. They've met all the steps. Essentially, at the time of planning and zoning, when they had the original public hearing, there was no objections at the moment. So, we've had two responses since then, neither do object. So, all the property owners, as you can see there, were notified. Pearl River, the property to the north is actually the same property owner, and then Premier Portables, all on there, all okay with the current zoning change. With that, I'll take any questions.
Sounds pretty straightforward to me. You sat here, do you want to say anything? You got to come to the mic, even if you're going to say no.
I'm happy to sign in, dear.
No, no, you're fine.
Typically, it's applicant work where you should be able to speak.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oddly enough, I've actually enjoyed the council meeting this evening. It's quite interesting to hear so many different agenda items related to this project. And I've got to say, for a city that's obviously experienced massive growth, I think the city of Bastrop is one of the cities that have managed it responsibly and as well as you could have. So, again, we thank you for the opportunity to submit this and very much appreciate, hopefully, developing this project.
Tell us your name.
My name is Banks Chisholm, and I'm with the owner's team, represent the owner.
Thank you so much. And again, I apologize that you...
And I'm happy to sign the...
No problem. You're good. Councilmember Kirkland?
Yeah, question. There's a building on site and then you're doing the rezoning. Are you going to tear it down or build something else? Or you're just going to...
What happens to Caliber Collision is what he's asking you.
Caliber Collision remains. The second partial that is off the frontage road, that residential house, will get demolished. And that's actually the building that you're seeing there in the second window screen.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
All right. Are there any other questions before I open the public hearing?
One last thing, it was just approved unanimously at PNC. Just to give you that information.
Unanimously approved at PNC, good thing to know. I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing and happy to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Plunkett and a second from Councilmember Kirkland. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Chisholm, you shouldn't say, "Oddly enough, you enjoyed it." We have fun at every one of our council meetings.
I always enjoy the council meetings. This one hasn't been as storied.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, Counsel, now we're on the bottom of page four on item 9F, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R2023-50 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Financial Procedures Manual, which is attached as Exhibit A, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening again. Let's see if we can get on the right agenda item. There we go. So, Financial Procedures Manual. So, the procedure has been a work in progress for a while, but it was escalated and finished. I pushed it out to staff after we got the draft written so that we could get some feedback on, from the administrative staff that follows our financial policies and procedures. So, we did take that step and have vetted that through. I did get a few questions, specifically on the electronic fund transfer verification. I wanted to show you the form that we are using. One of the big things about the verification is that when we verify, it has to be a different means of how we received it. So, that's why this form was created this way, so that we can show, I would say, 98, 99 percent of the time, we get it by email, because that's how the vendors send it to us. So, we are going to follow up with a call. We are going to document who we talked to and all of those good things. We're going to verify everything that they sent us on the form over the phone calls so that we can verify that it all matches up. And staff person that's doing the verification will sign, and then I will also review the form. I don't recall the vendor. I'm verifying that the process has been done and I'm signing on the form. And the part in the policy where it talks about this form, it talks about it being filed with the vendor packet. So, once we've completed the form, the verification has been done, this gets put with the packet so that all of that is kept together.
I have a couple council members flipping through the packet. This was not included in our packet, correct?
No, the form, no. I wanted to talk about the form just because there were several questions.
Okay, I'm just letting them know that they don't need to be frantically looking for it. It's not in the packet.
Yeah. It's referred to in the policy. So, I just wanted to show the form. I did change a little bit...
Well, before you go off the form, what triggers somebody to do something different with that form? It's done one time forever per vendor? Or what makes a reverification happen?
So, it's only done again if we get a new electronic transfer applicant. I mean, like, if they don't change their banking information, there's no need to verify it again. If they change their banking information, this form would be completed again. We would follow up with another call and verify the changes that were sent. If it was sent through email to us, we would follow up with a phone call.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's only a change in information or a new vendor that's requesting to have electronic transfer.
Okay, while we're still on this form, I've got three lights, so we're going to try to do this at once. Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes. The phone number, you've got maybe an original request, you've got a new request, you've got whatever their website says their phone number is. Where are we pulling the phone number from?
Various places. So, if, for instance, if we are, I've instructed them not to use the phone number on the phone unless that is the only phone number that we can find. Even if we go online, look up the vendor ourselves, we're doing our due diligence to look up the vendor, call and ask for the finance department, ask for the person that would be responsible for this type of thing, and verify against the form that we received. Sometimes we run into, I'm the owner and I'm the only one that does anything, and so, you know, we run into that. But in most cases, we can go to a website for that company, find a phone number, call the finance department, and verify it that way.
So, this was one of the kind of notes that I wrote on, you know, on like page 33 or something, that deals with the instructions for using this form. And the policy doesn't say what you just said. So, I was, I mean, that's a great answer, but we need to put that in the policy.
Okay. Yeah, I can expound on that.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers, was that it for the form?
For this, yes.
Yeah, okay. Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Okay, I'm sorry, but words matter. This is a financial procedure or a financial policy?
It's procedures.
It's a procedure. So, we're not actually changing the policy that'll keep us from this, our problem before.
So, it's not, it's procedures. It's what we do on a daily basis, our day-to-day routine.
So, what's the difference between a policy for you to do this or to have the procedure? I'm not understanding. I know we have a financial policy that we review every year when we do the budget.
Policies usually are a little higher level, where procedures get down into the actual process.
Okay, so if the procedure isn't followed, then what's our, what's the result then?
Well, that's why we're having staff review the procedures and sign off that they understand what the process is.
So, is this whole procedure documented, brand-new?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, that's why. I was curious where there was any red line. So, we had no procedure before of any of these things in here?
We did not have a written procedure. A lot of these things we did and followed, but we did not have a written procedure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, is this more of like day-to-day operations for the financial? And we did, there was nothing in writing for the day-to-day operations of the finance department?
There were pieces of procedures and policies, but nothing like a complete document.
Okay, I find that surprising. Your light is still on. Are you done for now? Okay. Councilmember Plunkett, and I apologize because I think your light went on first. I should have called on you first.
It's okay, not necessary. Is there any mechanical or systemic way to keep someone from not doing this? So, what I'm saying is, like, for example, at the restaurant, a server can't do a comp without a manager's swipe card, right? Is there anything that keeps the staff member from changing a bank account, you know, without doing this? Because there's nothing that says, I'm just curious if there's anything in the software that would allow for that.
Like the Nuke code and the secret key or something?
Yeah, and not necessarily, because if I need them to be able to put a vendor in, they're going to have to have access to the vendors. What I can do is, there is an audit. I can run an audit report, and I've tested the software to see what I can and can't do from an audit perspective. And I can run a change on this specific, these specific fields and see from this date to this date what's been changed and verify that the form was completed. I check the forms when I'm reviewing all the payables every two weeks when we pay to see if there's a new EFT vendor that we're using. And I go verify that, yes, indeed, we've done the EFT verification process.
How long has this form existed?
It's, the form itself has existed after the incident. The process was being done, but it was being written on the vendor packet, and so this is a much cleaner process of verifying exactly how we got the instructions and exactly how we verified them.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. So, can you remind me of how, how did, how did that occur? How was someone able to take debit funds out of the account? What was the error that caused that?
Now, we pushed an electronic transfer payment based on instructions that we received.
From?
From, we thought, the vendor.
The vendor's email was hacked.
Okay.
So, the first email was from the vendor, and then somewhere along the way, it got hacked. But if we had done this step, we would have been fine.
Okay, because, so, because I was kind of confused too. I was like, I was thinking this was a manual that, based on the language, it said needed to be reviewed every two years. So, I was thinking we were in our two-year period and it was time to review, and especially as a result of that hack. So, this is brand-new. That's why there were no red lines or...
The manual, yes. Correct.
And where, and where does it explain the process to prevent fraud? Because I kind of like scanned through the...
So, this process of doing this verification is what we needed to have and what we needed to do.
And this is just all, is this an electronic type of thing that they fill out? Or is this something that's faxed to them?
It is a fillable PDF.
It's a fillable PDF. Oh, it seems kind of antiquated to me. We don't have a more secure way of transferring funds that does kind of does a check and balance first.
This is just the verification of getting the information from the vendor. So, the vendor sends an electronic fund transfer form, which gives us their information to be able to pay them electronically. This form is for staff to use to verify that all of that information we received on that form is indeed correct.
Okay.
And they sign off that they have done the verification, and I sign off that I've seen that they have done the verification.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just, it was recommended by TML's attorney that, I mean, we have had conversations and we have spoken to TML and gotten recommendations on what we needed to do in order to never have this happen again.
Okay, got it.
And this was what was recommended.
All right, so, thank you for clarifying that. That was a great confusion. That was a great confusion of me. I'm like, what are we doing? So just to be clear, what we'd be making a motion on is the first edition of the Financial Procedures Manual tonight.
Sure.
Want to make a motion to approve?
Well, I think we're not, we looked at one page.
We have a few more slides.
Yeah, we looked at a page that wasn't in our packet. I think there's still several questions. I'm kind of surprised that we've gone through audits and getting no comments on audits, and we don't have a procedure manual.
So we had procedures, they were not written.
Well, that's not having a procedure manual. If it's not written down, and there's not a document that everybody can go to, so I'm just kind of surprised that our auditors didn't make a recommendation that we have a procedure manual for, because it sounds like this is the day-to-day operations. And I would think if you're onboarding a new person, it would be awesome to say, welcome to finance, this is how we do our day-to-day operations. So not for Ms. Waldron, but for our city manager. Have you found in the past that finance departments have a day-to-day procedure manual that's in print or online?
Not just finance, but.
Every department?
Because, one, redundancy, two, training.
Okay, I'm just, I know that we've gotten great reviews, and we win awards, and I'm just a little surprised that that feels like it's kind of a major, like, at the restaurant, I would think you have some written procedures of, this is, like, you can't comp things without getting a manager's swipe, so.
Yeah, we should have more written things than we do, for sure.
Yes, all right. So with that, you can continue with your presentation.
Okay, so I did get a few questions, I added some clarifying language. This refers to the EFT verification form. This form requires staff to verify the information by a method that is different than how it is received, which I went over on the form. And then I added that I actually do review and sign. It is reviewed and signed by a supervisor, so I added that language to what you have in the packet. And on this, ACH and EFT are interchangeable in our world, but I get that it can be confusing, so I just went back to calling it an EFT, confirms there is an EFT verification form completed, so I added that language in there as well.
That's all you have? Those are the changes? Oh, that's not nearly all we're going to talk about. Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes, certainly. So on the signature page, I would like to see a fairly strong statement that I have did as follows. "I understand that a failure to follow these procedures that results in a material loss to the city places me at risk of immediate termination at the discretion of the city manager." And this goes in the thing that they sign.
And that, Councilmember Kirkland, would you be willing to let our attorney look at that and make sure you're?
Oh, sure, of course, yes.
Does it sound in okay to you?
Yes, mayor, it does.
Well, there you go, all right.
You know, the phone verification procedures that I mentioned, because that was one of the questions I had, is like, well, where are they going to verify these? And I was, your answer was great, but that.
And it's a challenge sometimes, but yes, we're.
Absolutely. And then let me scroll down to that page, just a second, there, lots of notes there. One thing that's really important to me, so I have to take, like, this fraud training at work, and it does, it goes into social engineering, and goes in to the why. So this, this, I almost called it a policy, that these procedures, they don't ever talk about the why, especially on this verification thing. And so I think that we need to add a little bit on the why, which is, we're actively trying to prevent fraud, and then some examples of what that fraud can look like, what it's looked like. I think we may have had two incidences in our city, but maybe other things that we know of from other cities. But like, you know, here's a three-quarters of a page of things that we're trying to prevent by using this policy or this procedure, because if we get the staff member to realize that we're looking for things that are suspicious because of what we're trying to prevent, maybe they'll see something that we haven't even written down here. Because maybe someone's phone number has been swapped out because of a SIM card swap, or transferred phone number from, you know, illegally from AT&amp;T without them even knowing yet. And then you get the wrong email, because they've got the email hacked, I mean, this is all the stuff that's included in this, right?
And we take, we do take a cyber training every year.
Good, 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 good.
And we catch a lot of emails, we get them every day.
Yes, okay, great. But I, the why on this is really important, for them to realize that, oh, and if we have the cyber training, even refer back to, you know, the statement on the yearly cyber training that talks about social engineering and fraud.
Councilmember Kirkland, would you be amenable to maybe that why being on this introduction page that is the page that they're signing, so they are knowing why? Because it's like the purpose of this financial procedures, maybe there's some sentences that add, is to prevent fraud, and that's the same page that you're signing, that you understand if you don't follow them, it could potentially cost you your job.
Well, and I'm not at all opposed to that, but I would also like some of the why to be present in the discussion about the ETF verification. Because I want them, when reading those procedures, to actively be thinking about, this seems strange to me. Technically, it matches all of our rules, but there's something that feels funny, and I want them to be, to say that out loud, because they may say that to a more senior person, to you, to the city manager, and they may think, oh, wait a second, I've heard about this. And that takes you to discover something, that if they're strictly just following the procedure without knowing why.
Sure.
And so I think, I'm certainly not opposed to having it there, but I think on this page, where they're looking at it, the why is really relevant.
And the page number, just so I know.
In this case, is thirty-three.
Thirty-three, because I'll go back and watch this.
Yeah. And then, sentence two, a, "This must be by, with a person independent of the requester." That's a little strange wording, but even if I tried to fix the wording, like, "This must be by a person independent of the，在请求， I wasn't sure what that sentence meant, independent of the requester. Independent, I get, but who's the Requestor? I was just fuzzy on.
I'll have to go back and look at the page holistically to figure out the content.
No, fair enough. But anyway, that sentence, despite the minor, you know, editing thing that does seem strange in the middle of the sentence, even if I got rid of that, it wasn't clear to me what that one was asking for. But the rest of the sentence is clear, you know, "by a method other than the original means of the request." And then I had notes on, where does it get the phone number? You've mentioned, you've answered that, so, you know, we should add that in here, to multiple sources for phone numbers. And, you know, some of the things that I've thought about that could contribute to fraud would be disgruntled former employees. You mentioned that in the policy, in terms of like disgruntled former staff, but you might have a disgruntled former employee on the other end that's attempting to steal through the process of sending, you know, things. So, you know, you could mention that, certainly hacked emails, hacked SIM cards, transfers of phone numbers, I mean, these are just the, in general, the kinds of things that we're sort of looking for as we're having these conversations with the vendors, and that's what I had to say. Thank you.
On page thirty-three is where he's found that weird sentence, and that is under new vendor requests, because one of the things that struck me is the EFT is not even one of the sections in the overall procedure.
Oh, yeah.
So it's new vendor request, but it's specifically about EFTs and changes to the EFT, so, okay. Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
I know it's not a policy, but I was wondering if, if maybe, has legal looked at this? Did it, does it come through, since we're going to make somebody sign this, that it could be their job is, would it be something he, that Alan should look at to make sure it's, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I do not believe legal has reviewed this document.
She's asking, is it appropriate for legal to review the document, or is it really more?
Yeah, more just staff, because I'm really beside myself that we, the city spends, is we just passed twenty-four million dollars earlier, and we don't have a procedure on how to do it. I am just beside myself.
You never written a procedure.
We didn't know how that, you have, so, I'm just curious.
To the point of, we're asking an employee to sign something that's already covered in the employee manual, I'm not sure that.
Okay, I just, as long as you feel confident, I feel confident, I'm just making sure. Thank you.
What I would add, Mayor Pro Tim, is if this, I've not reviewed this, but if it's consistent with the TML risk pool is recommending, that's probably the source I would go to to begin with, because they're the ones leading the charge on this lately.
Thank you, Mr. Borquist. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, mayor. Councilmember Kirkland, do you mind reading that termination statement that you want one more time?
"I understand that a failure to follow these procedures that results in a material loss to the city places me at risk of immediate termination at the discretion of the city manager."
So, just to clarify, because some of these people are crafty, so I may follow every procedure out there, and it still happens, so that is just if it's approved, if it's, you're saying, if it's proven that the employee failed to follow procedure?
Yes, yeah, exactly. So the employee would have to fail to follow procedure, the loss would have to be material, not three dollars, and the city manager would have to.
Discretion.
Discretion. So it has multiple, like, safeguards built into it, so that it's not like automatic, but at the same time, it's the reminder, and it is the, everyone's serious about this, it's really, really important, and then the city manager can use it if necessary, and hopefully she never has to.
Okay, I just wanted to be, I just wanted to make sure it was, you know, we're, again, these guys are crafty, and I don't want, you're fired, and it wasn't even my fault.
Agreed, agreed, yeah, completely agreement.
Thank you. And my other question is on the return, so if my, which it has been hacked on occasion, my money is guaranteed, and the bank can tell that it's a hack, why are we, why is it almost impossible for us to get that money back?
Because the money wasn't hacked. We were, we received false information.
Input, and then we gave it.
So once I let go of it, I can't get it back.
Kind of like so.
It doesn't mean we didn't file, it doesn't mean, yeah, like, we took all these steps, but, you know, once we've let go of it.
I got you, it makes sense, that makes sense.
So there's another city, the city of Bellmead, and the city of Aransas Pass, same thing happened, too. Aransas got their money back, because they caught it within the same day that the wire occurred, so the bank was able to stop it. City of Bellmead was not so lucky, they're in the same boat that we're in. However, the city of Bellmead has now refused to pay their particular invoice, because according to the city, they paid for a product, it went to the person who hacked the account. So the initial conversation was that it was our problem, that it was our IT, that it was us. It's now been confirmed through a variety of cities that the vendor was indeed hacked. And so I know we've turned over some stuff to the FBI, and I know PD is continuing their investigation, but from a, what would be the right thing for the vendor to do? Obviously, there's some insurance and things, we'd have to work through that. So I know that they're facing some legal challenges with the city of Bellmead. For us, it was a matter of, how long is it going to take us to defend it if we decide not to pay it, and is, you know, where is that equal? So we're, right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern to see what happens with Bellmead before we decide we're going to jump in, but it was, I believe, for the very same piece of equipment, right?
I'm not totally sure, theirs was more, yeah, their amount.
Okay, Councilmember Lee, is that?
So would it be appropriate to table this and get a new version?
I think we should go through the rest of your comments, and we can absolutely have them bring it back. But I think it might be beneficial, especially with the city manager and the city attorney, let's just go through the rest of the comments. How many more did you have?
No, no, I'm done.
You're done?
Yes.
Wow, anybody else? All right. So is that a motion to table?
Motion to table, yes.
I have a motion to table to the next, to when they're ready?
To when they're ready.
Because it may, and we hope it's April eleventh, do you feel like y'all can do it by then? City manager, are you okay with tabling it to the next meeting?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland.
Second.
To the next meeting?
Yes.
All right, and a second from Councilmember Crouch, and nine F will be tabled until April eleventh. Everybody clear on what they're voting on? Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, just a quick question, I just want to make sure there's nothing that's going to, this delay is not going to cause you, your department, any pain or anything like that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Clear what you're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. All right, we're on the top of page five, we're homing in on it. Item nine G, consider action to approve resolution number R 2023-53 by the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, to select the proxy to represent the City of Bastrop at the Bluebonnet Electric Cooperative Annual Meeting and instruct the proxy to vote for candidates selected by council. This was put on by the secretary, but it's fairly straightforward, if you go to the packet, and you'll note that the only one who has an opponent is in a district that's not represented by us, so we, and we don't know those people, they aren't in our district that's represented, so I would encourage us to either give our proxy to the board as a whole, or pick our favorite board member, but I'm also open to discussion if anybody has other thoughts. Comments?
I.
Councilmember Lee?
I'm like, I'm a little confused as to why we even have a say-so in this. Can you explain?
Because we are a huge customer with Bluebonnet.
So.
As an entity that's involved with it, we have some proxy votes, we have some votes, so we either have to, one of us has to show up and vote away, or we tell them, we're giving them our proxy and say, you guys do what you think is right.
So at the annual meeting, there are things like rates discussed, there are things like expansion, there are things operationally that are discussed that will impact the rate payer, so to speak, or the customers, and we are a large customer, so we get a seat at the table.
Councilmember Kirkland?
I motion we assign the proxy to the proxy committee.
I have a motion to assign the proxy to the proxy committee.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Kirkland, and a second from Mayor Pro Tim Rogers. Any further discussion? Clear on what you're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, yay. Item nine H, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023.
Mayor, I apologize. There is a step one and a step two, and we didn't step two, and I just sort of saw that. So step one, choose who you want to vote your proxy, and then step two, check either A or B.
I, I thought with, if we're assigning it to the proxy committee, I thought it would be A in both of them, because it says, I instruct the proxy committee to vote my, at my discretion, which we've picked from the A above. Do we need another motion for that, do you think? We're all looking at you, Mr. Borquist. We're on page two seventy-five.
Yes, I'm sorry, mayor, council, I was not looking at that item, so I'm trying to catch up.
Yeah, I thought, I thought proxy committee was proxy committee for both.
No, I agree, but it just.
I see it says. Would you like to rephrase your motion?
I think you have, I think you have a choice, to either have the proxy committee come back and make a recommendation to you, or you have to give them direction, either A or B.
So, mayor, I can make a second motion.
Okay, let's have a second motion.
I motion that for step two, we check box A to instruct the proxy committee to vote my proxy at its discretion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland, and I have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Rogers. Have you got the motion, Madam Secretary? Excellent. Want to call the roll? Thank you.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
All righty, now we're going on to nine H. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-08 of the City Council of, the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending ordinance number 2022-22 fee schedule for the City of Bastrop to amend Appendix A fee schedule, A 14.01.001 of ordinances to amend the cost of variance subdivision variance review, zoning review, zoning board of adjustment review fee from three thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars to five hundred dollars as attached in Exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer, and severability, and establishing an effective date, and include on the April severability, and establishing an effective date, and include on the April 11th, 2023 consent agenda for the second reading. Ms. Carrillo?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is in line with our development process improvements. Obviously, one of the things I'd like to tell staff and the developers, there is always a way through a regulation, never around, never ignoring it, but a way through. Staff is not that ultimate authority, that lies with you, and that lies with the boards and commissions that you appoint. The prior administration felt that the fee should be so punitive so as to discourage the request for variances. Obviously, not appropriate legislative thought or policy from a customer service perspective. You want to allow the ability for those boards and commissions that you appoint to do the work. There is a cost involved with the staff doing the work. So, for example, a zoning board of adjustment case is prepared as a court case, because the appeal to zoning board of adjustment is district court. Planning commission is a little bit different, as is construction standards board variances. I've offered a flat $500 fee, because I haven't done a complete cost of service yet as to what each one of those would actually cost. We did have about eight programmed in the budget to happen, so the loss of revenue is described there. The fund, Ms. Waldron didn't mention earlier, but the fund is being transitioned from a general fund reliant fund to a special revenue fund, because it does have its own revenue, and it can be sustaining. And as we go through the development process, it should be self-sustaining, we shouldn't be funding it out of other funds. So, while there's going to be a revenue reduction with this item, I don't believe it'll negatively impact the fund that we couldn't continue operations. I may come back to you and tell you, I need to amend it to X amount of dollars, because we've gone through the cost of service, and I know it really costs me $701, or whatever that amount is. The $500 is, we do need to have some discussion, and there are, I know, some folks waiting who've been wanting to apply for a variance, but the cost has been prohibitive.
Thank you. And, Ms. City Manager, I also think when you, we talked about when you go back and do the cost of service, they may not all be the same number.
That is absolutely correct.
All right. Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes. I feel like 500 can be too high for the simple things. And I, I'm not certain how to identify a simple thing from a policy perspective. You know, I had a thought that maybe if the project is worth less than $10,000, or $1,000, or, you know, something like that, it could be called simple and would be a $50 fee. But I, I'm looking for a little guidance on it as well, you know, what would be appropriate, but the, for instance, you know, a sign variance on a Main Street building, $500 really feels like it's too much.
So, again, not having a cost of service in front of me, it's hard for me to, to defend what that number should actually be, whether high or low. I will tell you that there's two ordinance amendments before planning commission on Thursday, that constitute what the vast majority of our variances are, and one of them is a lot of record. The way, we have a lot of lots around here who would divide it by meets and bounds, right? You started off with a larger lot, and it got subdivided apparent, lifted off. The way the statute reads, from the state perspective, is if you're not expanding and adding water or wastewater or street, you should be allowed to develop on that piece of property, and it should be exempt from a plat. Our definition of extending infrastructure has been, historically, if they asked for a water meter, it was considered an extension of infrastructure, and so we put them through the plating process. They would apply for variance to plat, which is only a $50 fee, but normally, when there's a variance like that, there's also other cattywampus things wrong with the plat itself, which leads to this other stuff. So, we're taking that off, hopefully on Thursday with planning commission, so that we're able to do that. And the other big one is non-conforming structures. So, again, with the passage of the code, a lot of things became non-conforming, which has a disproportionate impact to a lot of our lower-income residents who are just trying to do a repair, et cetera, et cetera. So, in old standard planning practice, is you drop a pin and you do a radius, and if everybody in that radius looks the same, then you're able to do it. And that goes in line with, if we're trying to keep Bastrop authentic, and we like what's on the ground right now, we should be able to do more of that, or fix what that is. So, that's in front of planning commission as well. So, that will alleviate that type of variance request for just what is considered the normal. The zoning board of adjustment, I would caution you to not reduce that one regardless of the type, simply because that is prepared as a court case. We do extensive work with the attorney, because we do have to prepare as if it's going to district court. And the subdivision variance, that is normally through a, something that's going on with the plat, something that didn't match our current standard, that one could have a plus or a minus to it, because it could be a large plat, or it could be a small, you know, they want to subdivide it into two pieces, like the Piney Creek example earlier today. So, for that one, I could, I could tell you, but it's hard for me to give you a dollar amount tonight.
And zoning reviews require public hearings, and you have to send out...
Yes, notification and...
Dollars that you're spending to be able to do that. So, I think, to your point of, there ought to be, like, smaller ones, maybe, what they're really trying to do is make smaller ones not even be on this list. That, that's really the goal, and that if you're on this list, it is taking some effort, we are spending money, and that's why she's recommending $500. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, that's how I've understood it, based on our conversations.
So, I don't have a specific thing in mind, I guess, but sign variances, the, on 71, we had big signs, things that are expensive, large signs, that didn't meet existing code, and those were about the only things, did that go to ZBA?
A sign would go to board of adjustments, I believe, maybe planning commission, I'm not sure which, which body that is. I'm looking, I don't believe our sign variance is 200, is $500. I don't believe the sign variance is that expensive. I'm looking at the... I'm sorry?
Well, more, more importantly, let's clarify that sign variance isn't one of the fees that we're setting.
No, and fair, so if, if we're only setting these three fees, can we maybe just define what they are real quick, and then, maybe we can hit the others in another discussion?
Their subdivision, zoning, and...
Zoning board of adjustment.
Well, what types of things is a zoning variance fee? What is a variance to zoning?
Um, a place type, parking in the first layer, a, well, what used to be now, a certificate of appropriateness, that now has kind of gone away.
Really, with the place types, there haven't been very many zoning variances.
Yeah, there was, there was eight that were in the history, and what were, what we actually, what I actually saw, and what was actually delivered as part of a variance, and these were the ones that were embedded in that.
So, the place types before, when there were eight place types, if you, they were on a Euclidian, there was use-based, so if you weren't in a specific use, then you would have to come for a zoning variance to say, well, my use isn't listed, but it's kind of like these, will you give me a variance and let me do that? A conditional use permit, stuff like that. But now that there's place types, and it's form-based, and unless we see it, hear it, or smell it, we care about it, there's very, very few zoning variances that I've seen in the last several years.
And mostly, and the construction standards isn't on here, because I believe it's only a $50 fee. It's, it's much less, because at the construction standards board, for example, the burden isn't very heavy. The applicant wants to do an alternate, meaner method, the building official has said, no, I don't really agree, the board says, yeah, we agree, or no, we don't agree, and that's it, it ends, and the permit is issued. So, it's a lot less of burden, so that cost is a lot less. Those up there have public hearings associated with them.
Can we, independently of this, get a list of all of the, I mean, basically, all of the forms of review that exist?
For a variance, for if, if a customer threw a regulation versus the stop?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I've got lots of other lights, Mr. Kirkland, are you...
Oh, yeah, I'm done.
All right, Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I just wanted, that was my concern, that I thought the $500 would still be high for someone who has a small project, and it's going to cost them, you know, $500, now I got to pay another. So, that was, I just wanted to reiterate, that's a concern of mine, too. Also, I was, because when I was reading this, I was wondering, oh, if it's a big commercial developer project, and it's only $500 for them to get a variance, and I'm just needing to raise my fence a little higher, why is it the same? So, I just kind of wanted to reiterate what Councilmember Kirkland said, and then, you know, I, I have that concern as well. Because I actually found, in my, the Google queen that I am, I found a document from Bastrop, and from 2016, and the fee was only $300, and it compared it to Elgin, Maynor, Smithville, there were, and even Austin, and the variance between the difference from the smaller cities to the bigger was $300 to $600. So, the jump to 3,000, when I read that, was like, whoa, and then today, I couldn't find it again, so, I guess I'm not a Google queen. So, but yeah, I, I kind of want to see some...
We can table this, and what I can do is, I can bring you examples of the last two years of what, since the fee was this high, what's actually gone through, versus what project just kind of died, because we didn't, or they chose not to go through the variance process, so that you can see the impact.
We might consider not tabling it, because it's the first reading, and you could give us some information and change your recommendation, because the longer we don't do it, the longer it's $3,681. That is my concern about that. I'm all about efficiency. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Are you done, Councilmember Lee?
Yes, ma'am. I have a question on the zoning board of adjustments, a sign variance review, you changing it to $500? So, what's the difference between the administrative sign variance review?
So, an administrat, oh, that's a good question, I'm in a...
Because that one's still $1,000.
I'll defer to trade, but, so, it, my review of the fees is, there's a lot of fees that we charged for us just looking at it. So, an administrative review would have been just that, it was internal to us, we reviewed it, and to give that variance, we said it was $1,000. It, it is a multidisciplinary review, so there is a lot of people looking at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing is that perhaps when you bring back the second reading, there may be some other fees that we would like to look at that we could reduce as well.
And I just want to defend the council, because when we brought this variance up once, or these fees up once before, we were told that that is what, the fee is exactly what the staff costs.
That, that a cost of services had taken place.
I'm just letting, I'm just trying to defend myself away with $3,000.
No, no, you're, you're absolutely right.
So, I'm just going by what we were told.
I, I will tell you right now, a rough back-of-the-envelope cost of service, it isn't that. That's the first thing I can tell you. The second thing I can tell you is, I have done in-depth cost of services for development review and development services departments, and if you had done a cost of service, you would also have an SOP and training manual, and I promise you, on my children, those things do not exist. Because what it is, is a list of all the steps involved with doing something, who's touching it, and how much it costs, and you end up with a total. And then that translates into a training manual, because all of your steps are there, right, and your handoffs and all of that.
It's a pretty easy Excel sheet.
It is a pretty easy Excel sheet, and I can, I can tell you with full certainty, that doesn't exist department-wide, so for me to be able to tell you, I know that Anne's cost has worked in, Tracy's cost has worked in, Alan's cost has worked in, the engineering, I can promise you today, that document has not been something I have laid eyes on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers. Councilmember Crouch?
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers asked my question, so I, I just wanted to bring up that we did question that cost whenever it came up the first time, and that's what we were told that the cost was, so, I'm, I'm all in favor for bringing it up on the second reading and, and look at maybe the other one that John, Councilman Kirkland found, but the, for sure, the 3681, just from listening to the development group and their list of complaints, this is, this came from there, I think.
And you're correct, the sign variance is also 3681.
That was it.
All right, all the lights are off. I, I am encouraging council to not table it, but to approve the first reading, and with the direction to the city manager to bring back for the second reading. Mr. Borquist, if she adds things to the second reading, are we still golden?
Yes, Mayor, while our charter requires two readings, it does not require the document be the same both times.
Okay, just, just, just double-checking, make sure we're real clear about it, so...
And I think that's actually a fine result, because that allows you to actually learn something through this discussion and apply it to the second reading, versus being perpetually putting it off.
Excellent.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Plunkett, and a second from Mayor Pro Tim Rogers. Council, thank you for caring and reading the backup, and I think we're ending up with a better, we'll have a better ordinance going forward. Everybody clear on what you're voting on? So, I, I'm sure, Councilmember Plunkett, that because we are making so many changes, this is not going to be on the consent agenda, you'd like this to come back as individual consideration?
Correct.
And that's all right with you, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Are you clear on the motion, Madam Secretary? Okay. If you will, please call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers? Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council, the motion passes unanimously. We're on the last individual consideration item, and then we'll do a real quick executive session. Item 9I, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-07 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the building, Bastrop Building Block Code, Chapter 6, Section 6.3.009, private frontage subdivision subsections D and F, providing for findings of fact, repealer severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting, include on the April 11th, 2023 consent agenda, we'll see about that for second reading. Ms. Carrillo?
This is, this is one of those squirrely items that made its way into the code outside of the Iroodell District. So, the statute is very clear, we don't regulate aesthetics. This is an aesthetic item that made its way, and the section says, buildings with a first-floor commercial use shall be glazed with clear glass no less than 70% of the first story. One, you've got an aesthetic item, but two, you have a conflict with the International Energy Code. The clear glass component and being able to heat and cool a building with clear glass requires some pretty, either expensive glass or thick glass. So, this is the first item that the construction standards board, now newly formed and convened, set to cover. They were in unanimous agreement to amend, to strike this item. While they were doing so, they said you need to look at item, the next item, which is item F, also an aesthetic requirement, that says, all openings, including porches, galleries, arcades, and windows, with the exception of shop fronts, shall be square or vertical in proportion. And we launched into a discussion about round windows, and oval windows, and octagon windows, and at the end of the day, again, it's an aesthetic discussion that we should not be doing. So, they wanted to strike item F as well.
Councilmember Kirkland?
City manager, there was a discussion about clear glass?
Correct.
Didn't they also strike clear?
They struck the whole item.
Well, on C.
D and F is what I...
D and F is what's on the...
Yes, D and F is...
I know, I understand, I, I was in the construction standards board meeting, though, and I was just, I was wondering if they also struck the word clear from C. Remember the...
I, I remember the conversation, but as it relates to D, because clear glass is mentioned in item D, I don't recall the conversation in item C, but I'm happy to go back and review the minutes.
So, maybe it won't be on consent agenda, and you'll take a look at that and bring it back if we need to update. And thanks to the construction standards board meeting for... Thank you. Ms., Councilmember Kirkland, anything else? Council, any other questions or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland with the city manager to investigate item C.
With the city manager to investigate item C.
And bring it back, not on the consent, regular agenda.
And bring it back, not on the consent agenda.
Is that all right with you, Councilmember Plunkett?
Ten and four.
All right. Council, you clear what you're voting on? Madam Secretary, you've got the motion? If you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.[1780.48]
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?